Like that, sir?
That's perfect. Okay, I recommend that nobody buys any lottery tickets today. So, all right.
I think everybody should buy lottery tickets. That's the sign.
Maybe it's the antithesis of bad news. Anyway, so let me get started. It continues to be problematic. Sorry, it looks like I'm still having issues. The transponder, the flash drive isn't in here, so.
It's here.
Okay.
Says something about reconnecting. Mind if I say something, sorry?
As you don't know, I've dropped a few pounds over the course of the campaign, so appreciate the compliment.
It wasn't stress related?
No, no, it wasn't stress related. We were doing a lot of walking, a lot of steps, thousands of steps. What I want to share with you is, as we get ready to go into the next session, we have a President designate of the Senate and a Speaker designate of the House. And typically, everyone is wondering what is going to be on the agenda for these two presiding officers. And usually what you see, and I'm sure we will see this time as well, is that the Speaker has an agenda that the Speaker wants the House to accomplish, the President has an agenda that the President wants the Senate to accomplish, and then they work together on what they can mutually agree on. What is unusual is if you see the two of them before they actually assume the presidency and the speakership, communicate a joint agenda together. In the eight years I've been in Tallahassee, I saw it with Speaker Weatherford and President Gates, and that was in 2012. And I haven't really seen it since then. What we see is their agendas get rolled out after they take over. But I'm here today to say that we have seen it again. Last month, there was a joint editorial authored by Speaker Designate Sprouse and President Designate Simpson, and the headline of it was, "Florida Must Address Rising Sea Levels." And the data that we've received in the legislature indicates that if we were to have, I believe, 12 inches of continuing sea level rise, then we're looking at potentially 30 -- actually, let me just pull the numbers up, I have them right here. If we get 12 inches of sea level rise, we're going to be looking at 65,000 homes that could potentially be impacted from that. And if you take that and look at, okay, of those homes, what does it impact? It's 122,000 Floridians, and 20% of homes that have a 30-year mortgage could potentially be dealing with a sea level, rising sea level challenge over the term of that mortgage, which, as you know, will diminish the enthusiasm for loaning mortgages in the state of Florida. So what we are facing, if we ignore rising sea level, is something that's going to impact our Florida communities on the coast, our families on the coast, and ultimately, the business of Florida as well. And so that was the basis for the two of them putting out a joint editorial where they said, "This is something that we need to work on, and we're going to work on it together." So they've telegraphed that this is something that the next legislature is going to be addressing. And they laid out three things that they've agreed on, that they're going to work on. The first is flood mitigation, which can be done through either natural barriers such as our sand dunes and our beaches, making sure that we're taking care of those, restoring our beaches, taking care of our sand dunes, or through artificial means, which is raising seawalls, if that's necessary. So those are all on the table, is something that the legislature will be looking at. The second thing that they have on here is partnering with our federal government. The Army Corps of Engineer is currently doing a risk assessment and plan of action for Miami-Dade County. And they started with Miami-Dade County because that's where nuisance flooding was first witnessed in the state of Florida, on Miami Beach, around seven or eight years ago, and it's been consistently getting worse. Once that plan is done, we can then, as a state, partner with the Army Corps to look at other areas of the state that are dealing with nuisance flooding. And I know we are on the West Coast, we may not be feeling it here right now in our community, but it is definitely happening in Collier County on Marco Island, there's nuisance sunny day flooding going on there. In addition to the Army Corps of Engineer, both federal agencies, the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, have made funding available for coastal resiliency in the context of rebuilding hurricane-impacted areas. So point one is elevate our natural barriers, point two is work with our federal government, and the third point, which is part of the reason we're here today, is the state wants to work with their local governments who are taking action on this and be a partner with them. And so being a member of a compact provides a regional approach, which is always something that the state legislature looks to first, and if you're a member of that and there are appropriations that are going to come down here, those appropriations will likely go to something like a regional compact to then be distributed among those who are working on that effort. And so those are the points that I wanted to bring out today from a state legislative standpoint. This is going to be an issue in the next session. There are paths that have been identified for the legislature to work on, and I think this fits within one of those paths and would benefit your community, should you choose to participate in it. Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative and Dr. Savaricci. Great presentation. And Representative, you touched on it, and for years, of course, communities have been kind of -- well, we've been working together, but when it comes funding time up in Tallahassee, it's been more of an individual approach. And I also want to thank you for your efforts for potentially getting together with Big Cypress Basin, because this, you know, that was, and it's no disrespect, when they drew that line, it was a political line or a jurisdictional line between Lee and Collier County, and I want to thank you and Chairman Chauncey Goss and so many others for addressing that issue with us. And so that would be helpful, but then, kind of, if you can, when it comes, you talked about regional funding, per se. So if money were to come, and we would certainly anticipate that, and you have maybe three cities in Lee County that signed on and two didn't, or, you know, any kind of an example like that for the regional funding?
Sure.
Thank you.
The way I believe that would play out is if the legislature were to appropriate funding for something like this, we would likely look to regional organizations first that are taking the view, the 90,000-foot view, and working collaboratively together. We would want to encourage that collaboration, so I suspect the regional organization would receive the funding, and we would leave it up to the regional organization to work amongst its members to decide how that would be distributed. So if you're a member of that regional organization, then you have a seat at the table, and you can discuss what are the projects that we think should be funded with these funds we foresee from the legislature. If you are not a member of that compact, then you won't be sitting at the table. And so what I would say is, the one thing I've learned in the last eight years in Tallahassee is you always want to be sitting at the table, because if you're not there, not only are you not eligible to receive it, but often you don't even know what's been done until after it's done.
Right.
And so there's a real advantage to being a member of an organization like this who's working on a topic like this that does have a regional impact.
Right. Thank you very much.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Just to give you another example of how compacts can help bring funding, not only from the state, but from grantors, we now, I and some collaborators at the University of Florida, have a proposal in to NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, to develop vulnerability tools to look at how sea level will affect the landscape through some modeling efforts. And within that proposal is a statement that says, "The Southwest Florida Regional Resiliency Complex is in its birthing phase. By the time decision is made on the proposal, we're assuming the compact is going to be a reality." And that's a sign of commitment of the region to having those tools and using them. So there's an opportunity where, I think that proposal is coming in at $1.5 million. That $1.5 million comes to the region, it's supported by the compact, presumably the grant is favorably reviewed because of the compact. If Benita Springs isn't part of the compact, the region still benefits from those tools. So not only is it leverage at the state level, but it's leverage against outside funding. It can make a big difference.
Right.
Thanks.
Counsel, questions? Amy, Jesse, Laura?
I have a couple --
Amy?
Well, thank you for the presentation, it's been very informative, and I have, it creates a lot of questions in my mind that need to be answered, and I'm not sure we have time to answer them, because I know that in the newspaper recently, it's been reported that Collier County and the Army Corps of Engineers have engaged in a project where they're supposed to not only protect the beaches, but have some sea level rise mitigation projects. So I'd like to see how they got that kind of operation going. And also, I think Benita Springs is what we call government light, so we don't really have excess staff hanging around to participate in that. And our, I think our science officer comes out of Lee County, so there may be a different kind of an arrangement. I'm not against getting together. You answered some of my questions, interestingly enough. Could you just, I know that we had a regional planning agency talking about funding, one of the reasons why that's not been so successful is that, like, Lee County and Collier County didn't support it, they wouldn't fund it. So I don't, I'm not 100% sure why we think that this wouldn't be the same fate here, because we already had an organization where we could all get together and handle our problems. So that's my second question.
Can I respond to some before I lose them in my brain?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot there, a lot to unpack. So one of the comments that resonated with me was Benita Springs being government light. I would argue that the compact helps you in that situation. I would argue that the government light jurisdictions are more --
We wouldn't be full partners, like, we had a steering committee, for example, and I want to say, who's our, who from Benita Springs participated in that steering committee? You said that we had a representative.
Your city manager, go ahead.
I was at the first meeting, then we had Community Development attend our former meetings. The very first meeting was an organization of all the elected officials, and our mayor had a conflict, so Matt and I attended the very first meeting, and then after that, it was the staff, and we had a member of Community Development attend.
But here again, if we had a staff person, if we could find one, unless they had the time to do the effort and to provide a thoughtful input into the compact, we would be sort of tag along. That's where I have some concerns about this.
Can I --
And then also the funding, like, the funding would, I think it would definitely come, the state in the past has always put the funding through the county, so then they distribute it to the different entities where the needs are greater. I mean, that would be a logical way to do it, so I think there are other ways to get it. I think that I would be more in favor of having kind of a loose relationship. I mean, I'm not against it, but I'm not really forward, and I think it requires more study and more understanding of what we're being asked to do, because I think that, at least in the past, we sign on to things, and unless we're going to do a really good job about it, I'm not in favor of that. That's where I'm coming from.
I concur, actually, with Amy, and we haven't, we're late, you guys have another appointment. I think we need to look this over, think about it, maybe more information can be supplied, and then see where the other agencies even are overlapping, and the other cities are how they do it. And there are lots of people here who are, you know, paying lots of people by the hour that --
Jesse? Thank you, Laura.
I'm good to sign on, in the sense that, you know, I hear you on the staff side of it, but what we're signing on to is a compact. A compact is a coalition of entities that are going to give credibility so that potentially we can get money. And to me, the potential risk of being at the table is worth the potential risk of figuring out hypothetically how we deal with that on the staff end. So since, I'm not saying we're going to give a crazy amount of hours, but I think we lend our voice to this cause to help them get the push that they might need to get dollars. And then if we get those dollars, then we'll figure out from there exactly how we'll proceed staff-wise. But if we can get, if there's going to be dollars, I don't think Representative Rodriguez would be here if he didn't think that there was a potential for there to be dollars on the table for us. So, once again, what he alluded to earlier, if you're not at the, you know, you're not at the table, you're on the menu, I'd prefer that not be the case, and figure out the staffing and the other one. So I'm good to move forward, and I'd like to hear what the rest of --
Yeah, no, thank you. Chris? Thank you, Jesse.
Well, I'm in agreement with Amy. I mean, the governing body that should be, take on this responsibility in our area is Lee County. You know, that's why we're paying a high level of taxes up to Lee County to support their government and where they have the staff to do this. And if it came down to allocation of resources, you know, the big dog's always going to have the way about how they're going to allocate those dollars, whether we're at the table or not. So, you know, if Lee County wants us to join, fine. If Lee County is going to do it on its own, fine. I'm not impressed with joining up at this point.
Thank you, Chris. Mike?
I'm in agreement with Chris and Amy. I think it's just another level of bureaucracy, and the whole thing's based on climate change, which, you know, might as well say man-made climate change. The climate's always been changing for millions of years. So if it just said resiliency against storms or resiliency against flooding, that's one thing, but to say it's climate change, I'm completely against it, so I can't sign on to it at all.
Agreed.
But thank you for the presentation.
Fred?
I guess I'm in the minority. I think we should participate in this, we have nothing to lose, and like, if you are not at the table, the table and the food's going to pass you by.
Right.
So I think we should join the compact, it's not going to cost us any money, and other big, successful things in the state have been done by these regional compacts. And we've talked about this sea level rise and all that in the past, proposals have come in here, I think that they're, but there was looking for money from us in sponsorship, this is a different thing. I think we should join this compact as quick as we can.
Right, right. Well, I'll make a motion that we accept and join this compact. Is there a second? Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion, counsel?
Laura's not here.
Could we wait just a minute or two? I'm sorry.
We lost a council member.
We lost a council member, again.
Which is, we discussed it on one of the prior meetings, is a big no-no.
Right.
Sneak it out.
Sorry.
Do we need to have public comment on this?
Public comment?
If you're going to be approving this today, then yes, you would need to open up the public comment.
Okay. Well, let's open it up for public comment at this time, if we can. Members of the public that would like to speak on this or express an opinion? Councilwoman Simons, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
I think you should join it. And worrying about a staff member, I tried to get this, something like this for sea level rise, a water adaptation plan for your Community Development Department, I don't know, years ago. Regional Planning Council could have done it, but, you know, Governor defunded it, that was a big thing, and then everybody started marching, same too. But they can do that for you. I don't think the staff member's going to be a problem. If you get money, you get an outside consultant like we do with government light, so, you know, that's what we do here in Benita. I think it's a very smart thing to do, and I'm glad they're finally getting to it, because it's a real thing. Don't build in the coastal high-hazard area to start. There you go, thanks.
Thank you, Martha. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Sorry.
Okay. Seeing none? Counsel, further discussion?
Well, I just wonder if we're going to vote on this, if we shouldn't wait until after the new council is seated.
Absolutely. That's a very good point.
Why would we?
Because it could be a whole new council on a whole new approach.
That's like saying we shouldn't pick the Supreme Court justice, because there's going to be a new president, potentially.
If it was 12 days away, I would say, you know --
It's just not a valid argument. They put us in here until the term is over to vote on things like this. Just vote no if you want to vote no.
But we don't know enough about it, we've raised serious issues about looking into where there's an overlap in Collier County, an overlap, and even, what is Sanibel doing?
What is the, what is the, what is the potential negative?
I don't know, Fort Myers, much safer.
Please, when somebody says, "We think we have funding," warning, warning, Will Rogers, I don't know, whatever.
Roll call, please.
Wait, wait, do we have a motion to table?
Yes, we were waiting on you.
Oh, but Chris also said --
No, there's been a motion to approve when there was a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for being with us. I'm sure we will revisit this again.
Wait, what about Chris's, we can't put this back under the table?
Well, I mean, the next council meeting will be after the election.
There's been a vote, but thank you, Laura, and thank you very much for being here. Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items only, please. Please come up to the podium.
I got to get out of here, so I couldn't come back later for this in particular. I appreciate that you're going to have a presentation later today about the downtown project. I just figured out off the top of my head that we've invested $58 million. These proposals don't live up to the 20 years of voting, even more than that, CRA downtown back in the 90s. These proposals do not live up to the standard that the citizens in this city are looking for through their investment down there, and the county's investment, too. Same, you know, as Ms. Carr, Mrs. Carr, Councilwoman Carr stated, this is very close to an election, we could have a whole new council, so people have envisioned taking votes for 20 years on creating something permanent and stable down there? These proposals don't do it for us, and I really hope that, at least for transparency's sake, because most of the people that are in this room right now, I think, are here for the zoning hearings. I don't think there's too many people here from the public who've even digested what is on the green sheets for the downtown proposals. Have a public workshops, you know? This is not, this is just not enough notice about what is looming before us. That would be the best course of action, public workshops, after the election, because yes, you'll have another whole council here. I appreciate the time you took to put it out there. You've heard my opinion about those two properties. I am not against doing something downtown. I'm against great urban planning, which I don't think, I don't know, has anybody on this council gone to the Urban Land Institute, been to participate in that? Because that was one of my liaison jobs on council. Good, okay? These do not comport to good urban design, and that's what we want. We want the best for Benita. You think they'd put one of these proposals on Fifth Avenue? No. So why are we doing it in Benita? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Welcome, Rick.
Hey, yeah, Rick Steinmeier. I'm a candidate to replace you, but I'm Rick Steinmeier, and my family has paid taxes in Benita Springs for 72 years. I'm not a stranger to Benita Springs, I love Benita Springs, I wouldn't be here. My grandmother purchased the Anchor BBQ on Old 41 in 1948, it's now Maria's. As a state security guard, I took an oath to defend the Constitution from entities domestic and foreign. First Amendment speech is under attack by politically correct, by politically correctness. And now they got us all muzzled, we can hardly understand each other. The Second Amendment is to protect people from government overreach, as well as family and friends, but it's mainly to keep the government from taking over and everything. To be safe, law and order is necessary, not a privilege. Zoning laws are to protect people from others. Changing the law should not be easy. Elect, the elected officials that wrote the law were not ignorant, obeyed the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good morning. Amy Sares in Tabo with Pavey's Law Firm. I am here regarding the Benita Village MPD zoning hearing that is scheduled for today. We would like to request a continuance per Land Development Code, Section 4-228-2B. I will note that this is our first and foreseeable only continuance request, therefore, under the code, we are entitled to this by right, but did want to bring it up in front of y'all.
Thank you very much. Derek?
That's correct, they're entitled, as the applicant, they are entitled to one continuance as of right, and so what I would say is, we can go ahead and make a motion now, because I hate for Mr. Tabo to wait, to continue to a time certain, which is your November 4th meeting.
Right, okay. Thank you, Laura, I appreciate that, but do I hear a motion to approve this continuance?
Yes, I'm not sure if that's a great date, because it's right after the election, we're going to be seating new -- shouldn't we have it, like, the next meeting, or?
I'll leave that up to the council to decide, however, because we have a --
I think you said December, did you say?
No, I said November.
Oh, November, it's Friday after the election?
Yeah. Hey, as Jesse says, you're elected, you get right in.
All right.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this continuance?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to continue this until a date certain of --
So it'd be your, it'd be your November, our November 4th meeting at 5:30, or there.
November 4th at 5:30, my last, I'll be there.
I got a question.
Yes, Fred.
Can we make, can we move our starting time up so we don't sit here till 10 o'clock, if that's a big, full agenda? Either that, or make the agenda short enough that we're done at 9:00 or 9:30.
I'll leave that to the staff?
We don't know what the agenda's going to be on the 4th at this time.
Well, look at the agenda, and if we're going to have a big agenda, then we need to start at --
When is the next meeting at 9:00 in the morning?
It would be the second.
It would be November 18.
Why don't we continue it until the 18th?
Can we do that? Is that right before Thanksgiving?
The issue is, we don't, we don't --
That's right before Thanksgiving. I mean, come on, let's set it to a date certain.
They're asking for the continuance.
Right.
And I think, but you know what, this has been here for a long time, so the people who are running, I think, are up to date, they receive the packets, and if they're not doing their homework, well, then we'll know that pretty quickly.
Yeah. All right, there's been a request to continue this to the next meeting.
You don't want it on the --
I think the applicant would prefer the 4th, if possible.
Well, if the applicant wants it on the 4th, I'm just saying, it's going to, if you think this is a circus, that's going to be a circus, but go ahead.
Okay. So there's motion on the floor to continue this to November 4th, right after the elections, and a few weeks before Thanksgiving, and about two months before Christmas and New Year's. Is that -- Is that, and there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and best of luck moving forward. Congratulations.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.
Absolutely. Okay. More public comment. I apologize. Thank you, Laura.
Made your meeting shorter.
Yeah.
Mayor Simmons?
Welcome.
And council members. Raise an issue related to Point 8A on the agenda.
Well, it's for agenda items, so yes, sir, please. You're welcome.
Well, I, I, hold on.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, the public comment.
Anything that, if any members of the public want to comment specifically on any of the land use changes, and you would like your comments to be part of the record, particularly if you're trying to establish standing, I would wait until the public hearings are actually called.
That, that was my question, sir. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. We'll look forward to your comments then. Other members of the public? Dwight, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. For the record, Dwight Esma in Paradise Road area. I want to speak about the two bids that are, that are on the agenda for the downtown properties. I think the one for the old Bamboo Village property is so clearly unacceptable that I have to assume no one on the council is in favor of it. If I'm wrong, I think you ought to at least, if you're willing to give away the land, I think you ought to make that part of a bid and let some other bids come in. As far as the bid on the Levin lot for a food truck park, there are several reasons I. An ordinance that banned food trucks from this area, so I don't know why you would change your vote. As I've said before, not now. We've got to give the stucco and tile, as I call them, restaurants a chance to recover That image, how it fits the style that you guys have been talking about for the downtown district. So why is it before council now? I went back and I watched the video of the May 6th meeting when CBRE talked about the process right before the bid deadline. Chris and Fred seemed to want to hold off on the bids until we knew more about the recession. Amy and Laura seem to be in agreement with that, but the mayor, they wanted to go ahead and see what the bids were. And CBRE had a interest in continuing the process. As Laura pointed out, they were getting $7,500 a month. They did say they thought we would get three to seven high-quality bids. We only got two, but we moved forward. People said we've held on to this land long enough. It should be producing revenue for the city, but in looking at the expected revenue from the food truck park in terms of ad valorem taxes and stormwater utility fee, it's only about $2,000 a year, and the bidder is a donor, and I assume a friend of some council members. We didn't even get two bids for each property. How can we know what's fair? We didn't set a reserve price. We didn't say what kind of design we wanted, so please don't waste any more time or money on this. We'll restart it at a future time. Now, I want to mention that some people have thought that I don't want, that I'm opposed to selling any downtown properties. I've always supported the idea of selling the Bamboo Village property. The city bought it for that purpose, but I've been against selling the lots near the Banshill Park because I believe they were purchased to have parking. When we have events downtown, if people can't find a place to park, they won't attend those events. So I ask you to reject these bids and consider them at a fut, and reopen it at a future time. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I don't see any. We will move on now to Item A.
An ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment to amend the future land use element and future land use map series, transportation element and transportation map series, and housing, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Jacqueline Genson for the record. This item is before you today. This is a continuance from last meeting, the general amendments for the city's comprehensive plan. At that meeting, we had two property owners that had some questions and wanted some changes as part of that request. I did provide a memorandum outlining those items. If you have questions, I'm here to answer. We also have Dr. Banyan on the phone.
Okay.
This item. You want to open up the, the meeting? I believe those two property owners are here as well to plead their various cases.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Francesca Pasidomo, Law Firm, Coleman, Jovanovic, and Kester. Do you mind if I use this? I'm here representing with Rich Jovanovic, partner with the law firm, the owner of West Bay Beach Club. I have here for you a very. The premise is that this beach club has been operating as a beach club since, prior to incorporation. It was designated urban commercial by Lee County, as was Meditera. It was zoned commercial in Lee County, as was Meditera. The city incorporated in 1999. It adopted its comprehensive plan in 2002. At that time, the city imposed a different future land use category. Despite the consistent and parallel historical use of both those properties. I'll briefly take you through, if I can figure the technology out, there we go, a timeline just to kind of put this particular property in context. It was acquired through the association, the residential association, in 1997. Almost $2 million purchase price for that property. Improvements have been made over the years. Operating expenses are incurred and paid over the years, all in reliance on continuing this use. We saw this series of amendments as an opportunity to make the use consistent with the comprehensive plan, which we believe should have occurred when, at original adoption. The, the reason we're here today as well is the owner would like to redevelop the property as a beach club. They would like to revitalize it for its residents, and is being denied a building permit from the city because the city is claiming that its use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, despite it being, again, the exact same use as a similarly situated beach club. Our request, it may be helpful to show you some locational areas as well. This is on Little Hickory Island, so again, we thought the proper mechanism was through this process that you were already going through. I'm sorry. Okay. The final here, just to give a graphical depiction of the two properties I was mentioning, how close they are as far as geographical proximity. That dash line shows where the city in 2002 decided that this property should be multifamily rather than commercial. So once again, our request is to treat this property as it's treating Meditera, extend the Little Hickory commercial designation to this property. Excuse me, consistent with the city's staff stated, I can't get to the top, consistent with the city's staff stated policy, which is to have a limited commercial uses on the island. We think that, that, that this is the appropriate process to go through to bring this property consistent with the, the comprehensive plan. And I will accept any questions. Richard may want to add something to the record.
Great. Thank you.
Just, just briefly again. Good morning. For the morning, good morning, Rich Jovanovic, on behalf of the petitioner. What the ultimate desire for the West Bay community is basically replace the existing structure with a structure that meets current hurricane codes, and in an attempt to do so, we would put ourselves at risk that we would no longer be a legal non-conforming use. We wanted to make some very minor changes to the building, probably less than 1,000 square feet, but anything that increased the existing footprint would not be allowed under the current comprehensive plan designation. Rebuilding even in the same footprint would put us at risk of losing our legal. Continue in perpetuity, which, what it was, what it was purchased for, how it was used when the city became a city. And going through this process, it was really helped for us, the information we were provided by staff, that were exactly like Meditera, but Meditera has the right comprehensive plan designation to go along with its zoning designation. We're just asking us, asking you to treat us just like Meditera, give us the right comprehensive plan designation. We already have the right zoning designation, and that's our request.
And you said you would add on an additional 1,000 feet?
We, well, we, it was not even a whole 1,000. We actually were going to square off a little piece that was a corner addition. The ultimate goal is to raise what's there and rebuild it consistent with the current hurricane building codes, and it would all be built according to the current development standards. We just, we're just asking to be allowed to do that without jeopardizing ourselves in raising the structure, and then someone comes and attacks us for voluntarily demolishing illegal non-conforming use, and then we, we lose the use altogether, and I think it's in everybody's best interest to have buildings meet the most current building codes. So that's, that's our request.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Public comment? I'm not sure if it's more for Richard or more for Derek, maybe both of you. Derek, I don't think you were here, but maybe you know the history. What happened in 2002 where it was, where they, the city had the ability to make it multifamily rather than commercial? So if they were historically parallel with Meditera, how did we get to the point in 2002 where this switch happened, and why didn't we pull the emergency brake back then? I guess. I mean, I'm open either side. I'd like to hear both.
I, I, I also was not representing West Bay at the time. I don't think people knew that this was happening. Frankly, the people who are now in charge of West Bay didn't engage me until they came in for their most recent building permit, and they were told, you cannot do the expansion you want to do because you have the wrong comprehensive plan designation. So I don't know how it happened, but all we're asking is to treat us just like you treated Meditera's beach club.
Derek, do you have anything?
I don't have any, I don't have the history on it. What, what I will say is that, you know, with these, these last amendments, you've tried to clear up the issue on the commercial side on the island and treat everyone consistently. Certainly, and I think John can speak to this a little bit more about the history of these projects, and we have also members of the public, I believe, who want to speak. But designating them as the Little Hickory Commercial would solve their problem. There may be other alternatives that could solve their problem as well, allow them to rebuild without changing it from essentially a residential accessory club to a residential development offsite to a commercial site. But, you know, I think long-term, something should be done to address these issues, because we have a number of these clubs that, that exist out there, and ultimately, the non-conforming thing will have to be addressed, one way or the other.
Right. So could we, I mean, can we potentially solve the problem by allowing the rebuild without even changing the zone? Honestly, I think if, if they were historically parallel with Meditera, I think they got hosed, but they should have had a lawyer. But we're here now, so being that we're here now, you know, could we let them rebuild it so that it's hurricane safe and then not have to deal with the zoning, and then everybody can save time and money? I don't know if legally that's possible.
I think they like, they'd be, they'd be sued. No, you can't, I don't think you can do that.
I, I think that even, even, it's not just simply as a matter of the city taking an interpretation as to our non-conforming code and saying that by, by reconstruction to a conforming development standard under the building code, that that's consistent because it still could be subject to challenge, because it's based on what the actual language of the ordinance says. So I think the solution is going to require some kind of change.
Yes.
But perhaps staff can give you a little bit more background history, what the actual hang-up on, on the permit is today.
And if I could add, just, just so you know, when you all do a global comprehensive plan amendment, there's really not noticed to individual property owners that their rights are potentially being affected. It is virtually impossible, and I do this for a living, to keep up with every change that's happening in a jurisdiction, and to think about every client that may ultimately be impacted by that, and give every client they notice that, oh, by the way, there's a chance that they're changing something. I just spoke to the general manager from West Bay, and they went back, and they were never formally notified of the change, so they didn't even know what was happening to them back in 2002. That's not uncommon. This is the perfect opportunity to, to fix that situation and treat us exactly like Meditera was treated in 2002.
And fix, and fix the problem with the other ones that are going to come before us, so it simplifies it. We have been there.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to call on people. I don't like to do that, but Amy.
I, I am sympathetic to what's being presented here. I'm not 100% convinced, and I maybe Derek or our staff can say, that this is the proper process that we're using, because the, the point that you just brought up 10 seconds ago is the same point that neighboring residents might have because they're not noticed that this is being changed, and in their own way, they are relying on this admittedly improper designation to give them some protections. So I, that's why I have a little issue here. I, and then I want to ask Derek what he means by Hickory Island commercial. Here, the suggestion is to make it general commercial, and I'm not even 100% sure what that means, whether that gives them a lot more opportunity to do something besides just put a, a, a beach club in there. So I think that it raises a lot of questions. I think I, I did have a conversation with John Dolmer, where he said that he thought a good solution would be to look at all the beach clubs and to make them some kind of a entity in themselves with some kind of designation so that we could regulate the kinds of activities that occur at all of those beach clubs. So I don't, I'm not 100% sure this is the right way to do this, but I very much am sympathetic to what you're saying, and I understand that you got, you got yourself in a mess through no fault of your own, and now we have to figure out the best way for the entire community to get you out of here.
May I, may I respond briefly? May I?
Yes, please.
We came here two weeks ago asking for this relief, and I think the purpose of that was to give staff and the public an opportunity to come and address the situation. We're here to address that situation. I, I am fine with a footnote or whatever you want to put in that, in your comprehensive plan amendment specific to this property that says it's got to be a beach club for the residents of West Bay. We're not trying to get general commercial uses on the property. We're just asking you to treat us exactly like you're treating Meditera.
But you're the current owner. When you have these kinds of regulations, you're not just focusing on the current owner, you're, you're focusing on future.
And again, Meditera has the same rules and regulations to a future owner.
Correct.
And we're asking to be, we're basically asking to be the same as Meditera.
I like to hear from Derek and the staff about addressing my concerns here, and if there's a, a better way in process that we could be following. That's where I want to have some information.
Just one other fact. We're ready to make the changes to the building. Right now, we don't need, we don't want another year or so delay that may come about through having to figure out, do we need to come another cycle of a growth management plan changes?
I understand that.
Okay.
Derek? Yes, go ahead, Laura. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think maybe we should just separate this out, deal with it, and then deal with our zoning issues, which we've already agreed we have to address. So we could just deal with this now instead of getting into the whole. So we could just deal with this now instead of getting into the whole rewriting of the beach clubs on the island.
I'll give you a little bit of history. The reason why Mr. Ivanovich is here and making this request is because as they got stuck in the permitting, I informed that we were doing comprehensive plan amendments on Little Hickory to address the commercial properties and to see if any of those designations would fit for their property, and then they could make a request to the council. It's not the ideal solution to let everyone know, because they're only asking to keep what they already have, but it is a solution to their immediate pressing needs, and that we're already prepared to adopt. So that's the reason why they're here, asking for that. Otherwise, you know, they could have come in and asked for commercial any other time. So if there's a way, we can do it either through an LDC code change, the nonconforming, or coming up with a new category for all the beach clubs. And as we've discussed before, it's best to keep everyone consistent, treat everyone the same, they're in the same rules, and maybe that means restricting Meditera in the future so that they match up with the other beach clubs. But I'll let John chime in because he's been waiting patiently.
Great. Thank you, Derek.
John? I was a much younger version of myself back in 2000, 2002, and there was a couple of people here that were there at the time, Miss Montgomery, fighting over other issues, not this one.
Anybody else?
It's hard to tell with a mask. They're a handful. And so what had happened was the property where Meditera now sits had historically been used for commercial, and therefore, commercial was the designation that it was given. This particular property, if I remember correctly, had been residential in use, and that was a long time ago, so I don't remember exactly what the use was. I know there's a couple of people that might have better memories than me, but that's where you look at the distinction between the commercial use and the residential designations. In terms of where we go from here, we have been in a generally uneasy piece for about 15, 18 of those years. And beach clubs can exist, they can remain as they always were, they can repair, but when it came to adding, excuse me, whether it was additional uses or square footage, that was a situation that really only Meditera's facility was allowed to do simply because of their zoning and future land use. Both were commercial, both allowed that use, and therefore, they were allowed to develop to the maximum of those development standards. What I think everyone has agreed to is that from 2000 until today, Little Hickory Island is generally residential in character. I mean, there are commercial areas of that island, but they are limited, and they are generally focused in certain areas. The idea of going into one of those areas that's not currently designated commercial and designating commercial through some form or fashion or footnote or outright change, now all of a sudden starts opening the top off commercial uses, which is something I don't think we are looking to do. I don't think that that's the intent that I've heard counsel wanting to do. But I think that there is a situation where these beach clubs are at an age, and they're at a point where they are going to need major remodel, they are going to need updating, even if it was just because the style has changed. But when you have property on the water, from the day that it puts the foundation in the ground, it starts to degrade, and it degrades faster than anywhere else because of the saltwater environment. These beach clubs are no different. So coming up with a solution that allows them to know exactly what they can do and how they can do it is one, I think, that would bring a little clarity to a subject that has not had a lot of clarity in the past. But I do believe that when we do it, if counsel were to choose to do it, it needs to be done in a way that really focuses on keeping what's there without looking to expand into different properties or into different uses that we're not currently or historically seen out there as part of a beach club. So those are my two cents in terms of what we do. If we want to do something and counsel is interested, I'm very happy to come up with at least a proposal or a couple of proposals for you to consider that would allow for the redevelopment or at least the rebuilding of certain clubs, but with strict standards that would keep the uses and the development parameters well within check and be something that would be consistent with the residential character of that island. With that, I'll...
Sure. Questions for John? Jesse?
Okay, so first one, I think this one's more for Derek, and this is from my knowledge, so forgive me if other council members know this. Do we have a duty as a city to give notice when we make zoning changes of significance to large parcels?
When we, to speak clearly, yes, we do give notice when they are part of large-scale amendments like these were. Even the amendments that are going on today and several properties that are being considered, they're not entitled to individualized notice, particularly when you're making changes that even could be citywide because, one, the cost of individualized notice would be very expensive.
We announced it. We posted.
Yeah, we posted. We posted in conformance, we put it in the newspaper in conformance with state law. It's a long process, there's a couple of hearings. So I have no doubt that the city followed the statutory requirements for notice at the time of adoption.
And it was about an 18-month-long process, so there was not just one or two meetings, this was a series of meetings over that year-and-a-half-long period.
So I like the idea of the bigger discussion for the others later, for the other beach clubs. I think that's something we should consider. In my opinion, you know, I think we make this right. We changed, we changed it after it was already purchased. And if they have consistently had, parallel and historically, the same things as Meditera, the fact that they just want to make the building hurricane-safe, but they're unable to do that, to me, these are the steps, these are the type of bureaucratic loops that people shouldn't get stuck in. They're trying to make it safer for people. So they can either keep it as it is, it's not like they're selling it, or they can make it safer, but they can't even make it safer because we won't let them do it because we changed it from when they initially bought it. So whether you agree with them being able to rebuild out there or not, that's not even really the issue. The issue to me is, I think we need to make it right. So I'm good with moving forward, so.
Motion to approve.
We have another, well, we have another property who has concerns in this comp plan amendment, plus we have the public comments. I would probably hope, maybe you make your final motions together.
Should we vote on them individually?
If we think it's going to be split, then I would say go ahead and do that at the end, you know, because it might just be easier rather than having competing motions. But I would say is I wait till the end of all the public comment before doing that.
Okay. So are we...
Well, just to comment on this, they're currently there, they have their use, so I don't see a reason why not let them continue that use. But if they're going to rebuild, exact same square footage, no other uses, and only for them, if they ever sell the property, it goes to what it should be.
And... And John, just let me interrupt. Mike, that was kind of my thought with the addition of the up to 1,000 feet. I mean, you're changing, and you know, I'm sorry to bore you with a little New Hampshire history here, but the fish houses, the fish cottages on Little Boar's Head in Northampton, New Hampshire, were built in the 1800s, and fishermen used to drag their boats up, literally in before the, long before the storm wall. The Historical Society, and I know we're probably talking a little bit of apples and oranges here, got a hold of them, so you could use that building, but you could not change it. You couldn't add a square inch, you couldn't add a story, you couldn't change the existing footprint. So good example or not, how do you respond to sticking to the original floor plan and not changing anything?
I put that in, that's better than nothing. However, the modifications we were making were so minor to the footprint, and some of them were even architectural, like a little tower, not occupiable space, but aesthetically useful space. So it was, that was the types of improvements we were planning to make. For instance, there was a room, when you get out on the deck, the deck was like this. They just wanted to square off the deck, so now people can actually walk out on the deck and look at the water. Those were the types of improvements we were talking about. We weren't talking about adding 20,000 square...
Are you renovating or are you rebuilding?
Well, we were doing...
Because if you're going to rebuild, you could build it in a slightly different shape as long as it's still the same square footage. So instead of having that problem, you'd fix that, but you'd still have the same square footage.
And that's what I'm trying to understand, Mr. Gibson, what the direction is. If it has to be the exact same footprint, then I don't get to make those small changes.
I'm fine with square footage, it doesn't have to be exact footprint.
I think we can work through that with our...
Did we get an answer? Derek, yes, I'm going to ask Derek for clarification, then Amy will come to your question real quick. But Derek, if they stayed to exactly the same floor plan, what does that mean? And then let me juxtapose that. If they stayed to the exact square footage but want to change the floor plan, what does that mean?
In order to give them the kind of assurance that they would require to tear down the building, you would still need to make some kind of code revision. So let me give you three hypotheticals. One is you change them to commercial, future land use today, which would make their zoning and future land use consistent. But if the fear is future user, at some point, I can't imagine it happening, that the residents of the West Bay Club decide they actually don't want to have a club on the beach, and they want to sell it, and it becomes any commercial use, well, that's probably the worst-case scenario, and it's inconsistent with the other changes you're making in Little Hickory now to sort of restrain commercial, allow it to redevelop, but keep it limited.
But wouldn't that be prohibited right now? You couldn't do that right now.
No, you can't do that right now.
Yeah, so...
So, but if with this comp plan amendment, with the request they're asking for, yes, it could occur. So that's one end of the extreme. And that's just brought on by the fact that those are the changes that are going on today. Alternatively, you could come up with a new comp plan designation along the lines that John has laid out, which would allow you to, allow them to rebuild entirely, change the square footage, do other updates as necessary or needed by the community, but it remains a private club, you know, not open to the public. And then third would be just a tear-down, rebuild provision, probably in our nonconforming code, but it would be very restrictive, and it may apply to properties outside of Little Hickory. So those are the, in my view right now, those are the three options. If your goal was to keep the consistency but give them a lot of flexibility to redevelop without opening it up to the public or becoming a commercial property, then I would go with option two. Now, what you may recall is even though this process started pre-COVID, these neighborhood amendments to Little Hickory, we actually drafted up the language and processed it and very quickly. So it could be done fairly quickly. Time is clearly something that's of interest to the West Bay Village because they already designed everything, they've got permits in place, they just can't move. So that's why they're here. I don't think they're trying to go commercial, but if you want to restrict that, we would have to go down a slightly different path.
Thank you, Derek. Amy? Sorry, you have a question?
I think Derek asked my question because some of the things that were proposed, I didn't see how we could do it legally. So he described the process. I am reluctant to move towards general commercial. I would be in favor of number two, but I would be curious to know how long it would take for us to do. We can't do it right here, right? You can't just say...
No, it can't.
We have to do this like in a month or something, right?
I'm not, we're not asking for you to make us general commercial. We're asking you to make us the Little Hickory commercial, which you all have determined is an appropriate scale of commercial in that area. We're not asking for general commercial. And the beauty of that Little Hickory designation is it prohibits bringing other parcels of property together to combine them, so we have to live with the piece of property we have today. So we thought it was a natural fix to give us the same Little Hickory commercial designation that you're giving to Meditera, allow us to develop according, we need approximately 1,000 more square feet than we have today to make everything function properly. We're ready to come in with those plans.
I think, well, that's not the information we were given. So I want a clarification. What is Little Hickory commercial? Because...
You're looking at, you're looking at Meditera has a general commercial designation. That is being changed to Little Hickory.
All right. Well, what exactly do you get with Little Hickory commercial?
I'll ask probably Jackie or if Dr. Banyan's online, she can probably chime in and tell you exactly what it is.
Yes, yes, thank you, and for allowing me to interject here. So just a couple of things I want to clarify before we get into some of the changes. So just a little history, the changes before you. The goal for those changes was to work with the future land use category on Little Hickory Island that were in general commercial. So the goal was not to address consistency in uses across the island. So the goal was really to look at the general commercial on Little Hickory. So the change was made to create a Little Hickory Island commercial that didn't allow lot assembly and didn't allow big box kind of expansion. So that was step one. And so tying these two issues together, these were city-initiated changes to Little Hickory just to deal with the existing future land use commercial, so not to bring in all of the discussion about the beach club. So I think we should just point out, though, that we're not making any changes to West Bay's property. It is really just amending the commercial future land use category for those that have existing commercial. So I want to just also say too that a future process that dealt with consistency across the island would be appropriate, but not necessarily tied to these amendments that have a very specific purpose. So Amy, I don't know if that answered your question in totality, though.
You raised another question. You said that you had changed properties from general commercial to Little Hickory Island commercial. Well, the current flume on the West Bay is medium density multifamily residential, so that would not have been, that's not covered here. That's the whole...
Correct.
So my question is, what is included in Little Hickory Island commercial? What kind of uses or benefits is it? Are you just changing the name? Is it just like general commercial, or is there some restrictions on it?
Yeah, there's additional restriction, which is on the lot assembly, and that's one of the biggest, most significant changes, which is on lot assembly for Little Hickory commercial.
But generally, they could use other commercial activities besides beach clubs?
Yes, and in your amendments, and I'm not sure what page it's on, but there's a listing of all of those, all of those uses that have, that are in that Little Hickory commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, I've got a question for the applicant in this. What are, currently, are you doing food service or bar service in what you have?
Yes, and that's been occurring for many, many, many years.
Would that be, would that be the area you want to put the extra 1,000 square feet on?
It would actually be, make the bathrooms a little bit bigger to address handicap-related issues. Yeah. Square off some of the functional space for people to enjoy the outdoors, maybe eat outside in that little bit of area I was talking about. The distinction is, I'm only asking you to address a beach club that pre-existed cityhood. Anybody else who's got an issue with they want to convert their property to a beach club in the future, let them come here and deal with that. I'm just simply asking for the continuation of a use that the city has acknowledged has been going on for, since the city's been the city, and...
And it's 20 years old, so they're updating. There's new equipment, and you want to get the most efficient.
It's time, and to bring, actually, add parking is a problem. You can't even add parking without having issues. And things like that we're running into, it's time, it's time for more than just a facelift. There's a better use of the funds, and that's all we're asking for. I think this is a natural time to say, on this piece of property, we'll give it the Little Hickory commercial, and if you want to do a global study about future beach clubs, great, but I hate to get caught up in, I think most people are saying, West Bay, you know, you should be allowed to do that, what modifications to bring you current. But if I get thrown into a big general discussion about beach clubs in the future, I'm not sure I would get through this process. Fred, did you have something else?
Well, yes, I would go with option two. I am most anxious to hear what the residents on Hickory Island will say in public comment before I make my final decision.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments? Jesse? Before we go to public comment.
I mean, I feel they've done the work, they've spent the money, we changed on them. So to me, being as if they were here before we were a city, it's not like we're going to have to have the same treatment for everybody. So... So I think from a fairness component, we make this right. They're not selling it. I mean, the idea that, okay, they're going to sell it, and they're going to turn it into something commercial, that community's not letting that thing go. And if they were thinking about it, why would they be submitting and putting all the plans in together to do a new, new and upgrade? I mean, this is why people think it's overly bureaucratic to do things in the city, because these people are simply trying to get something safe for the residents. They're just trying to get it up to standards, but they can't even do it because they have to go through, you know, bureaucratic loops over and over and over. They're not trying to do anything devious. I have no problem with moving forward with it. I mean, if I felt that there was a potential detriment to it, then fine. If they're going to make the bathrooms nicer and the building look better, I don't know what we're doing here, trying to tell them no, so.
Okay. Other member, John, do you have something before we go to public comment?
One quick little piece of history that we didn't really get to. So after we adopted our comp plan, that future land use map is supposed to reflect historical uses of those properties. There was going to be a zoning chapter. That was adopted to correspond with that, and that was supposed to kind of get rid of these inconsistencies between the future land use designation and the zoning. And these uses would have been addressed as all uses within the city, at least to the greatest extent possible. That zoning chapter was not adopted in 2009, 2010-ish. And as a result, we kept a modified and continue to modify the old county chapter 34 zoning chapter that we adopted as our own. So regardless of the action you take on this particular property, bringing us to this point, there are inconsistencies with every beach club, well, along Little Hickory Island, except for Meditera, between their future land use designation and their zoning. Some have a residential future land use, some have a commercial future land use, and if whatever they have, they generally have the opposite zoning designation. So I would only ask, if there's going to be something done here in an effort of equity, and we're looking to do something, let's look at the entire situation as we go forward and not just this particular club. So that would be my only two cents that I would add.
John, one question for you.
Sure.
To beat a dead horse a little bit more, what happened or did not happen in 2002?
In terms of the adoption?
Well, we've heard today that something could have happened, something should have happened in 2002, but didn't happen, or went differently. I just want to make that clear.
So what had happened when the city created its future land use map, it hired a firm to go out there and prepare this document. And they had, one of their, their planners had gone out through the city and had taken notes as to what the uses were throughout the city. Little Hickory is no different. And that's why historically, and from that original document, there were discussions that went forth as to not only the current use, but the historical use, the planned use of particular properties. The northern end of Little Hickory was, was a topic of discussion, simply because there had been commercial uses there in the past. As you got south, there was really a large period, most of the expanse of Little Hickory Island was generally residential. And then you got down to where Doc's beach house is, and that was a little bit different. The character changed again. So, so as we worked through the process, generally that was adopted in the future land use map. And the intent was that those uses that were there would match up with the zoning when the, with the new zoning chapter was adopted. And that zoning chapter was, was to combine and to reduce the number of zoning districts to create a little bit more of a streamlined process. Regardless of the intent, it did not matter. The zoning chapter was, was not adopted, and we have the zoning chapter that we have always had, just in a continually modified form, which every time we bring you a land development code change, it's just modifying the old Lee County zoning chapter.
So it was brought up before council in 2002, but not adopted?
The, the future land use in the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2002. That was adopted by the state within the time period that you were given. You have another 18 months after that to adopt your land development code. Because that zoning chapter was not adopted, you simply retained what you had, put it in the book, adopted it as your land development code, and told the people in Tallahassee, we're, we're done.
Okay.
That's where we are.
Council, anything with John, or questions of John? Mike?
How do we move this forward and let them rebuild without giving them more uses?
In terms of giving them the Little Hickory commercial, I mean, that does open up more uses than they're, they're asking for, but I think what we can do is if you are instructing your staff to come back with, with an idea and a plan and development standards that, that keep beach clubs intact and allow them to, to operate as a normal facility without expanding the number of uses, we can do that. And if you at that time want to include West Bay into it, we can do that at that time.
Well, and I know some can serve food and stuff, and others can't.
Correct.
So I mean, only ones that can serve food should be allowed to serve food, the ones that are restricted, I don't want to see them get those benefits either. Everybody should be allowed to operate the way they're operating now and rebuild, is how I see it.
So, so the way that we currently treat these beach clubs is a use that they have and a square footage that they have, they have. It's if they want to expand the use to a new use, or if they want to expand the square footage, that we've had the rub, and I think that...
Mr. Gibson, I think the way to answer your question is, we're just asking you to change the color on our piece of property on the map. And when you change it on our piece, you're just dealing with my piece of property. You can deal with the bigger issue to other beach clubs that may be out there through a global amendment to your comprehensive plan and your land development code by just changing the map color as we're requesting on us. It's a specific change just for our property, and we're one of two properties that were beach clubs prior to the city, us and Meditera.
But that color change gives you other uses.
And I, and I understand that, and I'm telling you on the record that this piece of property is so valuable as an asset to West Bay, it is never going to be anything but a beach club for West Bay. There's no money in flipping this to someone to put a restaurant on. If it was, I'm telling you that, and if, and you could put a footnote on this piece of property that says, we can't, we can't, we only get the beach club use and commercial uses related to the beach club, we're fine with that.
And Derek's nodding his head, so I'm...
Yeah, we can annotate the, it's not, it's not a preferred method, but it has been, happened in Florida over the years. We could annotate the future land use amendment to indicate that, that it's restricted to only a beach club use.
Okay.
Okay.
Hybrid, okay. Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Well, I just, I agree with Mike. Whatever their uses are now, that's it. They can expand it some, but they cannot add another use. If they're not serving food now, they're not going to serve food in the bigger thing. If they're not serving booze, they're not serving booze.
Right. And if they're not issuing jet skis on the Gulf of Mexico, they're not issuing jet skis, right?
There are instances I know of that the beach club that's there shouldn't even be there because of the designation it was, but it got built, and then it's a nonconforming, somebody said it's nonconforming illegal use or something like that, but whatever.
So Derek, with the footnote and with the exact same uses, what, what do you recommend?
If you, if you were to annotate your code, essentially what you're doing is you're adding a policy to your future land use with respect to this property, indicating that it gets a commercial designation, but that the uses have to remain a private, you know, club, a residential offsite club, is essentially what it amounts to. They'll be able to tear down, they'll be able to rebuild within the development standards of a commercial development, but they will have to remain private and accessory to their residential use.
Right, so they, they can tear down and rebuild, but these rights do not transfer on sale of the property? Or excuse me, cannot be expanded or changed on the sale of the property?
I would, I would make the, the policy restricted to recreational facilities. So if they wanted to, if West Bay wanted to sell to another residential community, it could be another private club. I would not want to put a situation where we're restraining any future sales, but we're just restricting the uses to other consistent uses.
Right, okay. Amy, your thoughts on that?
My thought is, why didn't Derek tell us that 15 minutes ago?
An hour ago, sorry.
An hour ago. No, I do want, I do want to comment, I'm going to vote in favor of this, given this provision. I, I do want to say that the discussion is important because we were attempting to go down a path in policy that probably would have been inappropriate to get a result we want, and I do not think that's what council should be doing. I'm glad that we have this resolution, or I think we're going to have this resolution, but this discussion was important for process purposes.
Great, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes. And then Fred.
The question is, is you're talking about beach parks, is this all just about West Bay Club, or is this going to affect other beach parks? Because I do know Benita Bay wants to refurbish theirs as well.
West Bay only. This would be West Bay only.
And we are going to address our zoning, and we'll cover this. It could be fixed before Benita Bay.
Before, before we move on to the public comment, because Ms. Montgomery's here representing the Don Mall property, which was the other property that asked for amendment for, for our changes in this comp plan process. Is there, just for flow of the meeting, do you want to add public comment to, specifically to Little Hickory, this item? Do you want to let them go first and then have all the public comment, just so that you're not, you may have speakers that want to speak on multiple, on both amendments.
Sure, and I think it would be, you know, these are complicated matters, and I think folks may be here for one item, they may be here for multiple, but I think we should let them speak.
Maybe separate them.
Separate them. But then vote, but then vote at the end, Derek, is what you're recommending.
Yes, vote at the end, but I would say go ahead and separate.
Okay, great. And Fred, go ahead, please.
Well, I just want to make sure what I'm hearing Derek's saying isn't exactly what Mike said, which I agree with. Beach clubs, there are beach clubs that don't have food service.
Yes, no, 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 I'm sorry.
That's, he said, beach clubs.
Let Fred, Lauren, then I'll let you.
I just, I just didn't hear what he said.
Oh, okay. Fred, I'm sorry, in the microphone.
The, the uses within the beach club will remain what it is today, no expansion.
On the one, because it's only going to apply to West Bay, so it doesn't...
I want it for all of them.
Well, that, we're going to...
We'll have to get to that step by step.
This can only apply to West Bay because that's all we're talking about.
Who's doing the whip count? You just got where Fred's going.
We're doing, doing 1-0.
Okay.
Even though there's a lot of beach clubs.
It's moving forward.
All right. So council, any questions? Now we can let the public speak. Neil, I'm sorry?
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Well, but we're going to let the public speak on item A. Are you here to speak on item A?
I am here on item A, but a different topic. I am a...
Neil, I'd like to let the public speak on item A.
Yeah, so members of the public that would...
On this issue, all right.
No, that's okay, Neil. Oh, no.
No, we won't.
Will not.
Rick, welcome.
Rick Steinmeier. Now, I, my parents, my mother and father bought a piece of property, a Borders' property in 1974. There used to be three buildings on it that were rental properties. Somebody, West Bay, bought the property, and they proposed to build a five-story underground parking, you know, massive structure. And it wasn't approved. Sometime later, maybe in '02, Meditera went bankrupt, changed owners. They came and they took down two of the three framed buildings that were there, and they, a number of years later, that one building has left, they put up on stilts. They wanted, they don't have a consumption on premise for outside, for their outside deck. They have a deck on the outside, which is, they do not have a consumption on premise. They do not have a consumption on the beach. Meditera does not have a consumption on the beach. Meditera overlooks beach access 10, which is open. They are not allowed to hang on the rail and holding their drinks for the, for the public to see in the park. They have, what, 800 people belong to Meditera, I mean, to West Bay's club. On a nice weekend, you can't even walk through the property, one north, southeast or west. There's hundreds of people on this 200 feet of property. They don't have enough parking to expand their restaurant. I don't know exactly what they want to do. Right now, they're, they're doing fine. Sometimes they bring in bands and make noise and stuff, and we got to have a noise ordinance for that. But they've been pretty good. They used to take over access nine with all their chairs and stuff. The code enforcement's been out there a dozen times, and finally got them staying on their own property. I don't understand what this whole prob, what this whole process is about as far as the city taking over whatever, but I don't think you ought to vote for this at this time. I want to see, if they want to put a bigger deck, I think they ought to have more parking. If they're going to have more restaurant, they're going to need more parking. You got to have a limited amount of parking. They got 800 people. I don't know how they're going to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Welcome, John.
Hello. Dawn Koncakowski, and I have the history of Benita Bay. It was urban community, not urban commercial, when they got approved by Lee County in the comp plan. The comp plan, the equal to urban community was medium density, multi-family, and it transferred to that when we adopted our comp plan. They had the opportunity to come to the comp plan meetings when the entire city came out for the comp plan in 2002. It was advertised, there were public hearings. So the EAR process, the last five years, they had the opportunity to come then. That's when everybody from the city and the island came out to make sure that the comp plan updates were what we still wanted for our city. If you review the background, you will see that they were approved for a conversion of an existing single-family residence to a restaurant and addition of 1,104 square feet. This was, the application was received on September 3, 1998, issued on February 2, 1999, and finalized on February, I'm sorry, February 11, 2000. It was a limited review as a restaurant, are allowed in C1 zone. The, the northern end of the island is C1, restaurants are allowed in C1 zone. Private clubs are not allowed in the C1 zone, and commercial clubs are not allowed in the C1 zone. But they are operating and selling commercial memberships to private club members, not only for West Bay, but for non-residents of West Bay Club also. Where were they during the EAR process? Where were they during the comp plan process? In 2006, they requested a zoning verification letter. Debbie Pendlebury of Johnson Engineering requested it. It was confirmed on July 14, 2006, that it was C1 zoning and medium density, multi-family residential, which allows some commercial uses, not general commercial, commercial uses that are consistent with the comp plan, to serve nearby residents' everyday needs. They are operating as a private commercial club and sell memberships to non-residents in addition to residents of Benita Bay. An unlawful new use cannot transform into a pre-existing, nonconforming use. I think John Dahmer worked for LaRue when the city did their comp plan in the early 2000s. I think he also worked for Johnson Engineering during that time. Johnson Engineering is the one that went for these permits. Just, they're existing, they've been existing a long time, I realize that. I've been on the island since '83. I've been involved in all the zoning, all the comp plans. When they purchased these properties, they would purchase it under an alias, and then they would hold on to it, the use would continue there while they were getting their permits. All of them were administratively approved, there was not one public hearing on any of them. The lawful ones are Benita Bay and Pelican Landing. They were, may I have another moment?
Yes.
They were approved as private parks at the time, and private parks were allowed, and that was changed in January 1998. And all these other things were approved after that. Private parks, after that, all parks had to be owned or leased by the government and open for public use. The whole reason for this was... The whole reason for this was so that the public would have access to the beach, so they wouldn't be closed out by private clubs. They shouldn't be allowed to expand. They're lucky they're there to begin with and that's about all I have to say.
Great.
I hope that cleared up some of the questions. If anyone has any questions, I have all the permits. I went, this was before internet. I went to Lee County, sat and got copies of everything. I have copies of every permit of every beach club.
Thank you, Don. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond briefly?
Absolutely.
A couple of statements. First, I just want to make it clear that the only people who can use that beach club are residents of West Bay. There was an old regulation that allowed for people who sold their home in West Bay to continue to utilize that premises. We're down to four people who fit under the old rules. So, the people who use that property as West Bay, it's for West Bay residents, it's an asset of West Bay, a very valuable asset of West Bay. I don't think, the prior speaker was advocating that we open the restaurant open to the general public, this was always intended to be a limited-use facility and Mr. Gibson, we're committed to what we have today, the uses we have today will remain the uses today. We're not trying to expand those uses and make it some big, large public facility. I agree with the concept that Mr. Rooney was talking about with either a policy or footnote restricting those uses to what exists today and are being allowed to redevelop according to the existing development standards and I hope that the city council can support that.
And I was just going to add that, so I'm okay with everything you've said so far, but the adding of the additional 1,000 feet?
We would rebuild based upon the existing development standards, which is about the 1,000 square feet. We want to be able to bring, if we can fit more parking on the site under the development standards, we'd like to be able to do those things. So, with that, I hope you could see fit to allow us to move forward with our proposed, we, our plans are done. I mean, we really like to redevelop that site.
The information that I got on non-resident was just printed out from their website on the internet, says non-resident golf members may acquire access to all West Bay Club amenities, beach club, fitness, tennis and dining at the Bay House for an additional fee required by the West Bay Club Community Association.
Okay. Do we, is that consistent?
Does it even matter?
I think, I think at this point now we'll be trying to move on to the other property owner.
Okay.
And get that half of the hearing.
So, are we voting on this and then move on?
I just wait till the end.
Not yet, but I think...
Because part of this is, you know, I'm actually emailing with Dr. Bean, we have to come up with the actual language for the annotation. It could be a policy that gets put in with respect to this club or others, but I don't have it today, so I want to see where the whole hearing goes and if we need to continue so that I can bring that language back to you at the next meeting.
But I was saying that we, I mean, we kind of owe them individual votes, do we not?
What if we have different votes?
That's why, just, let's go through the rest of the public hearing, let's get it all out and then sort it out.
So, you're suggesting we move on to item B?
No, 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 you're still on item A, you have another property who has, is affected under item A.
Very good, very good.
On the inside of the city.
Excellent. Okay, next property, item A-2.
Thank you. Good morning, for the record, Neil Montgomery, I know you had some discussion in the last case about notice and Mr. Rooney advised you on what the requirements are and he's right, when you do a citywide map change, you don't send notice to individual property owners. However, if you remember, two weeks ago, your agenda packet had like 200-plus pages. Your average property owner, I don't think reads those 200 pages and is able to determine whether it impacts their property. I went to all those numerous public hearings when the comp plan was adopted, there was a plethora of people there, but most of them were consultants who knew what was happening. The general public didn't necessarily. In this case, the property owner didn't know, they didn't get individual notice and they didn't find out until a couple of weeks before the transmittal hearing and that was why Ms. Crespo came and spoke to you about taking the property out. Ms. Crespo has a map, for those of you who don't remember the property, it, part of it's in the city, part of it's in the county, as I noted. We filed to annex the property into the city with a ballot three paragraph petition to annex so that there's no issues like some of the ones you've had with other annexations to allow the property to be considered as a whole. We're not asking you to change anything today, we know we have to provide data and analysis, we know we have to go through public hearings, we know we have to go through a process. There'll be a lot of discussion with the staff and with the public about what the appropriate designation is for the property and if, like a lot of, some other applications I've dealt with, it shifts two or three, maybe four more times before everybody goes, yes, that So, what we're essentially asking for is to not include the property in the overall changes that you have pending. Because those overall changes, not only do, are they generic, but there wasn't a specific analysis about this particular property, it's just a generic change from county DRGR to city DRGR and we would submit that appropriate data and analysis and drilling down and looking at this property is the right thing to do and we'd ask that we have the timing and ability to do that, so please don't include us in the overall amendment. If you have any questions?
Okay, council?
So, just to be clarified, whereas the last property owner was asking to be designated for one of the property, the changes being proposed, this property owner is asking not to be designated, which if you recall, at the time, we initially brought this to the council, there were several properties that would probably also qualify for the change in designations to city DRGR, but were not being considered because they had active applications pending. And so, there was direction given to this property owner to say, how long until you have an application pending and they'd said, well, it could be a year or two, that was unacceptable, we move forward. They have since submitted a plan and they have submitted a plan with a request to annex, have other properties assembled by the property owner annexed into the city. And so, what they're asking for now is to not be designated DRGR, at least under the city designation. They would remain Lee County DRGR for current approvals while their pending petition goes forward.
And Mr. Rooney is correct, and the other property owners who have pending applications and were taken out, I mean, the question was, why didn't we have one sooner and the answer was, he didn't know. So, once Ms. Crespo came to the transmittal hearing and said, please take us out, the directive was, well, you better get an application filed. So, we had our public information meeting and we filed the, all the required applications.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Fred, then Mike, sorry, Mike.
I would like to say, I think that we should not act on this, give them 18 months or two years, because first of all, they have filed an annexation agreement, first time that I can recollect where we got a clean annexation agreement with no, we're going to give you this if you come in and all that kind of stuff, which caused some problems in the past. So, I think we could at least defer this for 18 months to two years and then if they haven't got it done, or we can't agree with what they want to do, we can still go back and do what we're going, we're going to do today. That's my thought.
Thanks, Fred. Mike?
And that was my thought also, we afforded this to the other property owners that are doing it, they're doing it now, we should afford it to them also, so leave them out.
Chris, did you have anything?
No, I agree, leave them out of it.
Okay. Laura, you're good? Jesse?
I think we need to leave them out.
Okay, Amy?
I'm the contrarian, because it's not leaving them in or leaving them out, because any kind of development that goes into this property will be evaluated on the basis of Lee County regulation and I'm not in favor of our doing that, we've already had some issues with that and I don't see why. The only difference by going to the city is that it's city's regulation that will govern whatever goes in here, so what's the harm in doing that? I don't get that at all. Is there some provision in Lee County that gives them a benefit that we don't give them in our designation?
Derrick?
I mean, I can't, I can't, I'm not a mind reader. If they had an application in for some kind of development that would be reviewed under the Lee County code, I would have more insight on that. I mean, at this time, they're seeking a comp plan amendment to come into the city to change, to have a designation other than DRGR. I mean, the reality is if they came in today under the Lee County designation, the property's already been excavated heavily, so my guess is they're not seeking an excavation, they're going to be seeking either additional residential or commercial entitlements, which the Lee County DRGR designation doesn't give them very much of either. So, they're, I believe, I completely agree with Councilmember Corombo that there are differences between the city and the county, but I don't know what that, what that advantage would be because it's a fairly low entitlement designation currently.
Yeah.
The way that I understand the applicant, I mean, the proposal here is to put as close to the Lee County designation into what we find the closest thing, which was the DRGR. But my understanding is the application doesn't want to stay that way, is that correct? You're going to propose a different designation when you have a project operating or...
Correct, we've asked for a different...
So, you're going to have to, we're going to have to evaluate your proposal using Lee County regulations when you come to us and say, I want to change it, or you're going to still have to come to the city and say, I want to change it, but you'll, we'll be using Benita Springs regulation.
We're not going to change into a county category, so we won't be under the county regulation. We are under the county's policy 1.4.5. The problem is, that we're trying to deal with is, if you look at that map, if we don't bring it in and we don't deal with it all together, we're in a process where we go ask the county to change theirs, we ask you to change yours, you have, you don't have similar categories and you don't have similar rules. So, we're trying to have what we believe would be one set of applications, so it's coherent and consistent and you can look at it all as a whole. Otherwise, you don't and I have no idea what we'll end up with, but I predict a mess.
So, you're saying part of your assemblage will remain in Lee County and not be in Benita Springs? I don't understand.
No, no, currently, part of the assemblage is in Lee County and so, they cannot, they'd have to divide the property up in order to develop it.
But you can annex them, you could have a, you'd have to, you're going to annex them into the city, right? Are you going to, are they going to remain Lee County?
We have filed to annex the county properties, the blue properties, into the city and we filed an application to go from policy 1.4.5, the DRGR, into a city category. So, you would have the opportunity to look at it all together under the city's process and the city's criteria. So, we're not asking to be treated special under any of the county's rules, we're just moving from the current category that all the property has to a city category. And we'd have to come back later for zoning to do anything else, so this is only the first step in a very long process.
I don't think I followed what you said. I don't.
Let me, let me try and do my best here.
This little, this little yellow thing that we have on here and then the tan.
If, if, if the property was, if they, let's, let's assume that as a property owner, they submitted for a development permit under the city or the county, were denied and wanted to move forward with the current entitlements, with some kind of, they would be dealing with, for one property, two completely separate regulatory bodies. It's in their interest to bring the entire property into the city and have one city designation for the entire property. Right now, it has two, it would, it has the same designation, but it's all Lee County, so they're protecting their current entitlements by having only a single regulatory regime to deal with. Once it comes into the city, I think, I don't think that there would be an objection, let me put it this way, I don't think there'd be an objection from the property owner to the city's DRGR classification if the entire parcel was in the city today.
But, all right. So, it's just to facilitate what you're doing?
Yes.
Because you have to do it in two steps instead of one step? Okay.
And the annexation, there are, there are issues even with the annexation, because you'll see there are property owners within the annexed area who are an enclave. Now, we can work with Lee County to have them converted over to us, but that has to happen too, so there are a lot of, there are a lot of hoops to jump through and so I understand why they're asking for what they're asking.
All right, then, I withdraw my objection then.
Okay. So, Derrick, what do you recommend now? We'll let the public speak on this item as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if there's members of the public that would like to speak on item A-2, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
You might, because I believe there could be a lot of discussion on the first part of this, I don't know if you guys want to take a break first.
I was just going to say, that's where I was going. All right, tell you what, it's 11:20, let's regroup at 11:30.
Does anybody have any food?
So you guys ran out of gas.
Yeah.
We will cover it. It might be midnight. It's a roll call.
Okay.
So you will stay here.
Yeah, there's really, unfortunately, there-
No, you can do it as one motion.
I think I'll make a motion.
I don't think there's any objection to the second property.
Then I'll make the motion and we get these both situated.
So that that motion would be including the West Bay with the annotation and excluding Don Mall?
Yes, correct. So that's the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a couple of seconds. Counselors, a further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Burden.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We are now going to address item B, which at my understanding is is very short.
Very short.
And then, jumping ahead a little bit, if there's members of the public that need to leave at noon, you'll be able to give a comment. The applicant has agreed ahead of the presentation, so. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, item B, Derek, please.
Now I lost my sheet. Oh, go on. Item B is an ordinance for the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rescinding development, the development order for the Benita Bay Development of Regional Impact in accordance with Section 380.115 Sub 2 Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances or resolutions, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Counsel, further discussion. Okay, members of the public that would like to speak on this item.
I only want to speak if you have any questions about the motion, but I support the motion.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
I'll recuse myself on this.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Burden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, item C. Are there members of the public due to time constraints that would like to speak? If so, please speak at this time if you'd like.
And while they're coming up, I'll read the title. The ordinance is an ordinance to the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for the adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use element to amend the future land use map with the city of Benita Springs, resource protection, Lee County outlying suburban and wetlands to Coconut Village and resource protection, providing for amendment Coconut Village future land use category, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And, because this is a comp plan amendment and a rezoning, and we will probably want to take these together so that all the comments can count. A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs to rezone 30.51 plus or minus acres from commercial plan development CPD, residential plan development RPD, mobile home plan development MHPD, and agricultural AG2 to residential plan development and commercial plan development to allow boat ramp, wet and dry boat slips, a continuing care facility CCF, containing a maximum of 300 independent living facilities, ILF units, and a 75-bed assisted living facility ALF, or 300 unit dwelling, 300 multifamily dwelling units at the northwest corner of Coconut Road and Coconut Point Resort Drive, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, very good. Good job. Yeah, we're going to have some public comment due to time constraints rather than a lengthy presentation, so we're going to let them speak. Welcome.
Good morning, counsel. For the record, my name is Joanne Ribble, and I'd like to speak to the Marina portion of the London Bay Plan, specifically against some public urging for the council to increase the size of the Marina. I've been here before, and I'd just like to reiterate these points that I've presented to you and to the zoning board. London Bay owns this property, and since the beginning, they have pledged to provide public access to Estero Bay in perpetuity. The design has been amended in response to public input, including changes to the boat ramp and parking area to increase safety and maneuverability for boaters. The Marina isn't intended to be a launch area to accommodate boaters from throughout Lee County. There are sufficient launch facilities in the area with ample parking. With future development impacting Coconut Road, including Bayview and Raptor Bay, we do not need the additional traffic congestion that a larger public Marina would bring. Please do not require a second boat ramp or increased parking, which would create a perilous situation for those of us on Coconut Road who ingress and egress there. A second ramp would increase boat traffic in the immediate area, creating a potential safety issue for other boaters. And a larger Marina will negatively impact our Pelican Landing Marina and our beach boat launch at the extreme end of Coconut Road. Finally, development will happen at some future time in this location. London Bay's Marina Plan gives Benita an excellent opportunity to get access to Estero Bay and provide boating, kayaking, canoeing, and viewing opportunities to the locals in the area. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here. And thank you for letting me borrow your husband for dinner last night. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. My name is Peter Tufo, and I'm the president of Suffolk Construction. I would like to take this time to talk about the impact a project like Bayview would have on the local economy. What this represents for both white collar and blue collar workers in this area is unbelievable and should be moved forward. We currently at Suffolk perform over $300 million worth of work in this area, employing over 100 residents, and have thousands of trade partners on our jobs every day who would like nothing more than to build this project in this area, something they could be proud of for their kids to see, and really just something really good for the community. Suffolk, alongside of London Bay Homes and the local municipalities, will develop a workforce planning strategy that will maximize local participation for both material suppliers as well as the tradesmen, maximize local MBE and WWE participation, as well as provide mentorship programs for local small businesses. Regarding the Bayview project, we're extremely excited about not only the end product, but also the incredible impact on the local economy. From a construction standpoint, the positive impacts are significant. Construction impacts will be in excess of $300 million going back into the economy. Nearly 5,000 individuals will work on this project throughout its duration. And that is also 1,000 worker hours performed, or man hours or woman hours, performed on that site throughout the duration. In conclusion, we believe that the Bayview development would be of great benefit and economic impact to the local area. Thank you, and have a great day.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public would like to speak?
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier. A 300 independent living facilities and 75 beds assisted living facility, or 300 multifamily units. That's got me confused, what they're building there. As far as the boat ramp, I went by upon Benita Causeway. The county has a boat ramp out towards, towards Lover's Key. I guess it's called Inner's Key. I don't know what the name of it is. But there were 75 vehicles and trailers parked all over the place, a huge number of people. And it's just like parking at the beach. There'll never be enough places to park for your boat ramp during season and when the weather's nice. So first come, first served, I suppose. But I got confused on a 300 or 300. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. I'm here to speak as well about the development by London Bay. You know, this is a development that has had over 60 public meetings.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Ryan Schmidt.
Thank you.
This is a development that's had over 60 public meetings. I think the developer's done a fantastic job of trying to bring in the interest of all parties. The question of whether or not the boat ramp should be expanded further past one ramp, it takes away from the fact that this is private property that should be and can be developed by this developer to their suits per the zoning. The fact that we're being pushed into a direction where it's turning into a regional boat ramp like a Puna Ross or an Imperial River that develops considerable traffic doesn't make sense for the use. I'm an avid boater myself, and I appreciate the ability for a private entity to provide me a public ramp that they are paying for and developing. But at the same time, I don't think the intention should be to force a private developer into creating a public access facility. The fact that they're willing to put one ramp in there is generous for boaters like myself, and I would take that into consideration. I would help.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon. My name's Taylor Masiro. I own and operate Captain Edge Charter Boats and Sweetwater out of Benita Bay Marina.
Where are you from originally?
New Hampshire, baby.
All right, just checking.
That's right.
Just had to get that.
Yeah, I knew that was coming. I was ready for that one. Couple of things about Bayview. I've been involved in all the meetings, public meetings, and the feedback honestly about the boat ramp, I think, has been a little ridiculous. This is a community boat ramp. I live in Benita. I spend probably 300 days a year on the water. I see the traffic. I know the traffic. I think what London Bay is doing in providing us access is fantastic. More importantly, from a safety standpoint, I transport, I don't know how many thousands of people a year on sunset cruises and things like that. I don't have a safe place to go in case of an emergency, so for me, personally, I can get to that Marina from New Pass Lover's Key area for sunset in about 10 minutes, where normally I'm going a lot further to get to emergency services. The challenge with Lover's Key is you're kind of land, well, you're kind of in the middle of nowhere as far as getting to an actual hospital, where this is crucial for me just because of our demographic that we serve. So I am definitely in favor of this project and hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of the committee. Alan Bowditch, I am a career marketing researcher, and I do need to make a number of points which are different from those people who have already spoken about the Bayview development. As a career market researcher, I was asked about 18 months ago to investigate the views that had been expressed by many people in Estero and in north Benita Springs.
Mr. Bowditch, could you hold on just one second? Only because Mr. Bowditch's testimony as an expert could be, you know, whether, I want to swear everyone in. Usually, we don't have to swear the public in, but when they're testifying things of their expert knowledge, I said, go ahead and do that now. Any members of the public or staff and the applicant who wish to speak on this agenda item, please raise your right hand and swear affirm that you tell, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Sorry for the interruption.
I just want to add that gravitas to your comments. I'm sorry.
And the clock was ticking, so I'll give you an extra 30 seconds.
Okay, that's fine.
You're at three minutes now.
So the investigation that was carried out was an online survey with just under 4,000 residents. We had a 51% response to that investigation showing the unprecedented interest in this particular issue. I also carried out a number of focus groups with boaters who launched their boats, and many of those have communicated to me consistently over the last 18 months. The key points that I want to make is from 1,966 individuals in the survey, 83% said that a single boat ramp was unacceptable. There were also 438 residents from the colony who took part in that survey, and their response also on that point was that 81% of them considered the single boat ramp unacceptable, too. Their views were very much in line with everyone else's. The key point was, however, that they were concerned about traffic problems along Coconut Road, as has been suggested. But they were concerned about the overall development, not specifically about boaters. The two focus groups identified that with one boat ramp, even though it is 18-foot wide, can lead to many, many difficulties. Not least, you had a problem with your car this morning. Other people have problem launching their boats, and with one boat ramp locked up, it takes a great deal of time to overcome those difficulties. There are only 15 places to park the boats and the trailers on-site. There is an off-site area, but the boaters have told me that that would be very difficult because they don't want to leave their boat in the water to go and park their boat off-site because of the dangers of theft. So there are many issues of a practical nature that have concern. So even though there are single boat ramps in southwest Florida, none of the boat ramp, none of the boaters that I've spoken to use single boat ramps for all these difficulties. And what one is really, or what the boaters have been advocating, is that by extending the 18-foot by 12 feet to 30 feet, which could be possible with an easement, which we were told from a civil engineer and boat ramp designer, that would overcome the problem. And two boat ramps would not create a massive influx of boaters to this area for the reasons that I've just mentioned, that the limited number of parking spaces, the off-site area wouldn't be used. We wouldn't see the trends that have been suggested by previous speakers. So I would like to ask Benita, the London Bay Development, to reconsider this position. We have had very amicable decisions and discussions with them, and they have responded to a number of issues that we've mentioned, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, late good morning. My name is Urv Nathanson, and I'm here representing no official organization, no club or group. I'm simply here to speak on behalf of the boating public, who have based many years of their experience and to express their views on the current single boat ramp as proposed by the London Bay Home Development. While some have construed my previous remarks in this matter to be negative, I am totally against the London Bay Homes development. This is not true. To the contrary, with one exception, they have done a fine job of researching, designing, and submitting this development for your consideration. Over the past 18 months, I've been personally engaged in a professional dialogue with Danville Ledbetter of London Bay Homes, which has been both positive and constructive in our exchange of viewpoints. 15 or 20 years ago, had London Bay Homes made such a continuing care retirement proposal of this kind, I imagine it would have fallen on deaf ears or not, would just simply have been dismissed out of hand. But the times and needs of the surrounding senior population have changed dramatically, and London Bay Homes has justified the need for their development. Applying the same analogy to my remarks based on changes in the past 15 to 20 years in the growth of the local boating population and their needs. The single boat ramp design, in my opinion, is flawed in several respects. I would like to focus my remark on only one of those flaws. Experienced boaters only desire safe, unencumbered, and timely access to the attraction jewel of the Estero Bay. Getting the boat out of the water is only the first part of that day-long experience. Getting the boat out of the water, of course, is equally important. As any boater will tell you, things do not always go as planned, and some unanticipated mechanical breakdown or human error can certainly cause a major problem with a single boat ramp. And Mayor, you'll forgive me, this is the perfect segue to your 9:20 arrival this morning. Some boats do run out of gas. Mayhem and Murphy's Law can set in rather quickly when this occurs. Such unanticipated scenarios are not uncommon as one might think, and every experienced boater has had such an unfortunate experience. When it occurs, it results in backups, traffic problems, needless pollution, and not to mention the real frustration of those who are waiting to launch their boats. There's really no way to remedy such a problem when only one boat ramp is available because there is no other viable solution. The addition of an adjacent ramp would obviously provide greater unencumbered access to the Estero Bay for all to enjoy. This suggestion of a second boat ramp is particularly significant, considering that so many boaters have expressed a genuine interest in using this particular site. In arriving at any final conclusion or consideration of the London Bay Homes development, I simply request that you give further thought to the points I have raised on behalf of the boating public. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for being here. Keep your words of wisdom in mind, so thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Mayor, staff, support staff, and council members. I'm nervous as always. For the record, Jim Weeks from Weeks Fish Camp. I want to really, first off, thank you guys for your service. No matter what happens in November, I really appreciate it, and I look more see the city of Benita moving forward.
Unless there's a lot of write-ins, I know my feet, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, I wrote down some notes. I don't be so nervous, so bear with me, okay? Village of Coconut. That is Weeks Fish Camp. I grew up knowing Weeks Fish Camp as Coconut. We call it Coconut. It is the forgotten village between Estero and Benita. It's at the west end of Coconut Road and always has been. Weeks Fish Camp opened 42, 1942, to the public. In '72, my granddad passed away, and waterfront property was sold because the family couldn't hold on that part of it as a group. In 2000, my grandmother passed away, and then really things started hitting. People trying to buy each people up. Investment groups came around. I remember the names. Googoo Hooey, whatever, a bunch of them came around. I lived down there at the time, and I wanted to live there forever. They didn't build around me. I couldn't care less. I loved living down there. In 2013, Green Mountain came in, and they secretly bought out individual private property owners and put them together in different groups, like I've heard mentioned, to where people don't realize that they're buying them all out for future plans. They closed the camp May 13 of 2014, promised one-year renovations, made promises to the city of what they were going to do, made promises to the public, to my family, to a bunch of people, you know? They changed course in 2015, sold the property, and then moved a different direction. I was very disappointed about that. Since then, I've been fighting for public access, fighting for support of the community that's been given to me on it, and fighting to keep the viewers' road open at the end. You remember that? They were going to abandon the viewers' road, and I'm glad that didn't happen. I'm going to try to calm down. I wish I was just telling history. I love telling history.
This is history.
Thank you. Well, I try to separate, thank you, yeah, definitely. 2018 or so, I believe, London Bay came involved. Daughter Corn the Banner I have here with Mark Wilson saying things and stuff, I disagreed with him, disagreed a lot, but we disagreed with him at the very beginning. He held several public meetings. Many groups and individual people spoke on their behalf and their feelings of it, and I've heard several different angles on this. I have been aware of the pushback of this project and the resistance on the water quality, the motor launching. What scared me the most was the sharing of Coconut Road. I went down there one time. I live right there, and you know the end of Coconut Road has that little turnaround at the end. I was riding my bike and saw cones up. I said, this ain't right. They can't have cones up. This, I pulled up to the gentleman, had the cones up, and said, he said, can I help you, sir? I said, yes, please move the cone. This is a viewers' road. I want to turn around down there and come back. And he obliged me, and I haven't seen the cone since. So to me, that's sticking up for the rights of the public, public access. It meant a lot to me. Okay. In closing, along, London Bay planned this project. They have reconsidered in the importance of the public access and the history, and I have decided to work towards a win-win proposition for all of us. It's not the best case, not as much as we would like to have, but I think it's important that we keep it open to the public in perpetuity, no matter what we can get. And I think London Bay sees that importance. They want to build their project, but yet they want to be a part of the community of Benita Springs for a long time. Sorry about that, too.
No, you're great.
Okay, all right. So I support this project because it scares me the most that people don't want to share Coconut Road. I mean, share it. It's a, it's a public road. It's a viewers' road. You build as many communities as you want to off a Coconut Road. We all live there. We need to share it. Other people say it's taken away from their, from their paradise. Well, this is our home, and I like to share our home with everybody and in the future. And I feel that London Bay has given us an opportunity to do that. Not everybody's going to be pleased, but I think the community would be pleased with what's going on down there, and I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job. Other than you saying you were nervous, I couldn't tell. Great job, honestly. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none? Derek, you want to tee this up, please?
No, I'm not doing anything. Unless I'm getting paid for it now.
Motion to approve the comp plan amendment.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second.
So just to, just to.
Anything we need to cover, Derek? I knew there was a few things.
The teeing up is you have a comp plan amendment and you have the rezoning. You can take them both in a consolidated manner. The applicant, London Bay Homes, is here. The representatives are here. You've heard this multiple times before. I guess my request would be to at least give some basic summary, ask the applicant to go through, and staff is here to answer any questions, so.
So you'd like London Bay to make a small presentation?
At least, at least a summary.
Yes, okay. Very well. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Oh, still morning, sorry. Good morning, for the record, Rich Ivanovich. We do have a consolidated and brief presentation. I just don't know how to, which one I, is it, Bayview, right here? I'll just briefly describe for you the two petitions you have in front of you. The first is, as Mr. Rooney pointed out, is the Growth Management Plan Amendment, which you've already voted to transmit. That is the opportunity to have the either-or development options of a continuing care retirement community or of 300 independent living units and 75 ALF beds or 300 multifamily units. Both options include the 72 wet slips and 10 public wet slips, two for, one for Lee County and one for Benita Fire, so there'll be 12 public slips, and 15 on-site boat-trailer parking spaces are under both options. We have off-site parking as well for boat-trailers, as you're aware of. That's in sum and summary, the Growth Management Plan Amendment. We can go into much greater detail if you would like on that, but I see several people shaking their head no, so I will, I will, I will fight the urge to talk unless you have specific questions on that. And then the PD rezone implements the Growth Management Plan, and that's the second item on your agenda. Same, same development limitations are in the zoning. Mr. Rooney, do you want more from us, or is that enough?
No, I just want to make sure everyone knows what they're voting on. There's no.
I would like a presentation or some kind of summary from the staff with particular focus on page four of your report, which says, I think, in your, in the staff report, you contrasted what was approved by the annexation agreement and what the difference are to what the suggestions are.
Good morning. Oh, no, good afternoon. It's 12 o'clock. Jacqueline Genson for the record. Just to summarize on the comprehensive plan, just for technicalities, we, the council did approve to transmit the amendment. It did go up to the state agency and also other agencies. We received no technical assistance comments and no objections, so therefore there are no changes anticipated for the text or the comprehensive plan map change. And because of the substance of the request, because it includes buildings over 75 feet, you do need more than five affirmative votes to go ahead and adopt the change. In terms of the staff report and the comment about the annexation agreement, really what that was is there was even some comments even at the zoning board hearing about how this development is different than the annexation agreement. I'll bring Mr. Rooney into the picture, but the annexation agreement does bring in some language where it could provide alternatives for council to approve a different project. It is built into the annexation agreement, so, but one of the points that was brought up by the public and even one of the zoning board members with the companion plan development rezoning case was just an acknowledgement that the proposal before you is different than the annexation agreement. If that helps what you were looking for.
I mean, I'm persuaded, or I'm intrigued by the comment that you have here is that adding specific permissible uses and increasing residential densities that would allow the placement of vulnerable populations in the coastal high-hazard area and coastal management area. These modifications, coupled with the companion's rezoning application, appear inconsistent with the annexation agreement. As such, and this is the important words, as such, city council should legislatively determine if these requested amendments are an appropriate use of the property. So I think that those differences, according to what you say here, that we as a council should look at things that are not entitled, that are coming from the annexation agreement. So any differences, we have to agree that this is an appropriate use of the property. And two points that I think are, should be addressed are. And two points that I think are, should be addressed are, there's a vulnerability to putting higher density. Now, if they use continually care, the density is marginally higher, six point four, but if they go to the alternative, it's a lot higher. It's eleven dwelling units per acre versus six. That's one of my problems that I still haven't resolved in my own mind. My second problem is that in the annexation agreement, there was a provision for one building over seventy-five feet, and this has two buildings over seventy-five feet. So those are the differences that we have to decide, that these are appropriate uses for that particular property, which is the old Wix Fish Camp. And I think that's what I'd like to see addressed.
I guess, I'll just, I'll just weigh in on this point. The, the, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. If, if there was no annexation agreement, most of Ms. Genson's comments and the staff report would still be true. It's still a legislative determination of the council. And ultimately, that's really what, what they've got before you is, you know, the density, all those issues can be determined legislatively. What the annexation agreement provides is that they, they have some entitlement to a minimum use of the property. They have, they have looked at that and determined in their own interest that, that the proposal that's for you now is better than extending the prior Coconut Village entitlements over the property. And so the applicant can speak to the, or the applicant's representative can speak to the annexation agreement, but, you know, ultimately, this is, I would, I would ask you to consider this application in and of itself.
Anybody have a problem with considering this in and of itself? Okay, Jesse, you had a question, or?
Well, no, I think it is a motion.
You said, were we gonna go around the table?
Well, I don't, I've already made a motion. I'm good to vote if, but if we decide we're going to go around the table again, then I've got comments. If we're going to vote, I'm good to go.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there further comments? Okay, now should we let the public speak?
Yes, and I would let the applicant, if they have anything to rebut from staff's presentation or my own comments.
Didn't let the people speak before.
Yeah, they did. So please, I'm...
Just real briefly, I, with regard to consistency with the, with the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, with the annexation agreement, at the prior hearing, your own staff said that our, our building with the two towers was in fact one building under the building code. So we are consistent with the annexation agreement. We had that testimony at your prior hearing, and there was a lot of testimony regarding, and I'm sure Ms. Genson can get into details, we are required to have an emergency, basically an emergency management plan in place for any project that's greater than a hundred units. So there will be a review and approval of an emergency management plan related to hurricane and evacuation. I just wanted to add that to the record. So all of those items were in fact brought up and addressed at our transmittal hearing, and, and what you have in front of you is consistent with what was previously recommended be transmitted.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we have a motion and a second. There's been a motion and a second. Any further questions, counsel, or any further comments, anybody? Roll call, please.
Councilman McCory?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gramba?
Uh, no.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, and now a separate vote on the zoning.
Okay, so moved, right?
Second.
And there's a second? Okay, counsel, discussion or questions? Okay, any presentation material?
Unless you have specific questions, again, the rezon is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Everybody good on questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gramba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman McCory?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. That's called teamwork, making the dream work. Great job.
And Benita's charming little Benita got a little bit glassier.
Three hundred million dollars back to the local economy. That's right.
All right, and if you recall, item eight C has been continued to November fourth. So you are at your consent agenda, unless you wish to take a break?
All right. Do we need a break, team, or are we all right to keep going?
Oh, I'm so, no way.
Eight B? I apologize. Real quick, Derek, I'm sorry, real quickly, as folks are entering and leaving, we did, I would just remind everybody that if we are in, we are in the home of the fire department and we're borrowing this space, so that if you are out in the lobby, please have a mask on at all times. Thank you. I'm sorry, Derek, go ahead.
No, I skipped over one. You still have item eight B, which is the Harkat Industrial Plan Development rezoning.
Okay.
Okay, and this is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs to rezon one point eight-two plus or minus acres from Industrial Plan Development IPD to Industrial Plan Development IPD for two parcels located at ten nine seventy-one and ten nine seventy-nine Enterprise Avenue, Benita Springs, Florida, three four one three five, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
And at this time, I'll go ahead and just swear in everybody, because there, I see there's a number of consultants here.
Great.
Anyone who intends to give any testimony, public or, or for the applicant, please raise your right hand and swear affirm that you tell, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. I also believe, Mr. Mayor, there are two representatives of the adjacent neighborhoods who have requested objector status. If they request additional time at the public comment to, to either cross-examine or to present evidence, I would ask them each to make their request at the opening statements. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Derek. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Farrar with BCF Management Group. I'm the agent for Harkat LLC. I just wanted to share what the owner had asked me to do. He is a resident and business owner here in the city of Benita Springs for over forty years, and he appreciates the staff and zoning board's recommendation of approval for this project. As it's become tougher and tougher economically out there, I believe that this, this person who, who goes through and puts their time, talent, and treasure at risk to take on this new adventure should be applauded for this project and give fair consideration for its difficult, difficult economic times. This project will provide direct job opportunities in the city which are needed, and I look forward to that. With this in mind, I'd like to introduce my planner, Stacy Hewitt from Banks Engineering, and the other consultants on the team for the next presentation.
Good morning, or good afternoon. Stacy Hewitt with Banks Engineering. I am a planner and would like, I've previously been accepted as an expert in land use and planning, and I would request to be accepted as such today.
Without objection. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll start with the K.
Yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience with us. We do have some members of the public, so we would like to make our presentation from the project.
Absolutely.
The request is for one point eight-two acres on the south side of the eastern terminus of Enterprise Avenue. The existing zoning is the American Ready Mix Industrial Plan Development, which was approved by Lee County and is expired. It was for a concrete batch plant. The original zoning for the property was light industrial. We do have the applicant's team here. We have counsel Jeff Wright with Henderson Franklin. We have the landscape architect Paul Klins, the engineer Brent Addison, and the transportation engineer Ted Trish, who will be available for any questions. This is the project location. It's south and east of Benita Beach and Race Track Road on the south side of Enterprise Avenue. The future land use for the site is industrial, and to the east across from a right-of-way is the moderate-density mixed-use plan development, future land use designation. The zoning for the site is the expired industrial plan development, and the surrounding zoning is light industrial with the Meditera RPD across the right-of-way to the east. This is an aerial of the site. To the north, there's existing industrial warehousing and distribution for auto repair with exterior overhead doors and a loading dock facing Meditera. To the east is right-of-way and then the Meditera community. To the south is an industrial warehouse and distribution center with several sites to the south as well having overhead doors facing the community to the east. To the west is an existing industrial and auto repair use. The zoning board did recommend approval for the case. They heard and deliberated over the testimony of all interested parties, and the industrial subdivision existed prior to Meditera zoning approval, which included extensive buffer and landscaping with a wall on top of a ten-foot berm, as we'll show further in the presentation. And there is an existing code provision for twenty-fourteen F, which does protect industrial subdivisions that are in existence prior to residential zoning from increased setbacks. The staff report recommends approval, and the applicant's in agreement with the conditions of approval is amended by the pre-hearing stipulation and the zoning board recommendation, and I would like to adopt the staff report and attachments as part of my testimony today. A couple of things I would like to note on the aerial in front of you. The subject, the north is to your right on this image. The subject property is in this location, and to, this is the existing landscaping and buffering between the site and Meditera and some existing residences in Meditera. There are, to the north, there's existing overhead doors facing the site. There's commercial zoning a little bit further north that also has overhead doors facing Meditera, and several of the industrial uses to the south have those as well. And there is extensive landscaping and ten-foot berm with eight-foot wall that do provide visual, sound, and light buffering from the proposed development. A timeline for the property is in ninety-one. It was rezoned from IL to industrial plan development to allow the concrete batch plant, and the main cement storage facility as part of that zoning allowed for a maximum sixty-five foot in height, and all other structures thirty-five feet. In June of ninety-one, it did receive South Florida Water Management District and a development order approval. Meditera RPD was then approved in December of twenty nineteen, or nineteen ninety-nine, and the current application is the city of Benita Springs position that the master concept plan's expired, so no development can happen on the site until the zoning is reestablished for the property. The applicant at first did propose light industrial zoning, but in working with staff, they suggested an industrial plan development due to the residential property to the east. And the current request as conditioned is less intense than the light industrial zoning since the uses have been removed or restricted and setbacks have been increased and there are further site limitations with the conditions. There were three neighborhood meetings held as part of the process, and in response to feedback from the neighbors, we did reduce the building height twenty percent from the originally requested fifty feet down to forty feet. We've removed and restricted some of the uses. There's increased setbacks provided, an increased proposed buffer from the original request, and we've restricted service and deliveries to the west side of the building and further restricted from the original six garage doors on the east, we've reduced those down to three. And we've also agreed to an open storage height and setback limitations. This is the proposed master concept plan that demonstrates the buffering to the north and to the east, as well as the site circulation, and the proposed stormwater vault, and the Excuse me. This is a line of sight of the property that demonstrates the distance between the proposed development and the existing residences over at Meditera. Between property lines, there's a hundred seventy-two feet from our property line and the nearest residential lot, and there is approximately two hundred and sixty-six feet between the proposed building and the nearest residential house. There is extensive buffering that exists on Meditera's property, as well as our proposed, a wall setback fourteen feet from the property line with a five trees per hundred linear feet and a double-staggered hedgerow, where the, we, I'll get into the deviation further, but there, typically, if there's parking within a hundred twenty-five feet of a residence, the wall would be set back twenty-five feet, and we're requesting that it be set back fourteen feet, but we're increasing the shrubs from eighteen per hundred linear feet to a double-staggered hedgerow as well. This is the schedule of uses. In red are indicating the uses that we've either taken out of the request since the original application, or that we've further limited with staff to require them indoors. We've removed twenty-four uses from the request, and we've further restricted fourteen uses. This is the property development regulations, also showing some changes from the original application. We've increased the side setbacks from twenty feet to twenty-five feet, and the rear setback from fifteen feet to twenty-five feet. The maximum building height originally requested was fifty. We've reduced that to forty. And a couple of notes, the Land Development Code, section four, eighteen seventy-three, would allow increased height by increasing your setbacks, one-half foot for every one foot of increased height. And in the adjacent light industrial zoning, that would allow a height of forty-five feet if they provided the same setback of twenty-five feet that were required. Just to put that in reference with, we are restricting ourselves more than what would be allowed in the adjacent zonings. These are the conditions that are handled in the staff report that I believe everybody has seen in the draft ordinance with, we are restricting the deliveries to the west side of the building. We're restricting to three overhead doors on the east rather than the six that were originally proposed, and the open storage is required to have increased limited height setback and more restrictive than the adjacent. The original deviations one and two were withdrawn from the request, but the current requested deviation three is the one described of just allowing the wall to be set back fourteen feet from the property line instead of twenty-five feet for the code. And the, the site is abutting a thirty-two-foot right-of-way that also separates us from the Meditera property, and there is the hundred and seventy-two-foot separation between the property lines. And Meditera, as be shown in the future slides, is separated and mutually protected by their own development plan, which was reviewed and approved while this existing industrial subdivision was in place. The existing buffering is twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer with a ten-foot berm and eight-foot wall, lush landscaping, and rights-of-way and common elements are also located between their buffer and their dwelling units. This is the Meditera Master Concept Plan that was approved that demonstrates the twenty-five-foot perimeter buffer and the existing industrial subdivision that was there when it was approved. This slide demonstrates their lush landscaping and the required berm and wall that are also, were included in their zoning approval. This is our proposed landscape plan demonstrating the buffering that was originally discussed on the master concept plan. This slide is again the line of sight, but I would just like to demonstrate, this is standing in front of the subject properties on your right, and this is facing, this is the existing berm wall and existing landscaping at Meditera. These are the proposed elevations. We are proposing to limit the doors to three instead of the six shown on these elevations. There are two alternates proposed, since the end user has not been decided at this time, and there is either a peak roof proposed or a slanted roof from one side to the other. This is the floor plan. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Policy one point one point sixteen is agreed in the staff report and the zoning board recommendation for approval. The height of forty feet, it, again, IL zoning can increase their height above that with the proposed setback that we have. It's less than the seventy-five feet allowed in the industrial land use designation, and it's also less than the sixty-five feet that was previously approved on this site. The floor area ratio is zero point three seven, opposed to a maximum of one point two, which is allowed in this policy of the comprehensive plan. The request is also consistent with objective one point eleven in policy one point eleven point one. It's also consistent with the transportation element and the recreation and open space Staff and applicant and the zoning board have all agreed that the project does meet all required formal findings for the criteria for approval. all required formal findings for the criteria for approval. The applicant's proven entitlement to the rezoning by demonstrating compliance with the comp plan, the land development code with the approval of the deviation. It will meet and exceed all performance and locational standards for the request and is also consistent with the densities, intensities, and general uses set forth in the plan. As demonstrated, it is compatible with existing or planned uses in the surrounding area. And it will, approval of the request will not place an undue burden upon transportation or planned infrastructure facilities. And it will not adversely affect environmental or critical areas. The proposed use, uses are appropriate at the subject location as more restrictive than the surrounding industrial zoning. And the recommended conditions are, provide sufficient safeguards to the public interest. The recommended conditions are reasonably related and the deviation enhances the achievement of the objective of the plan development and preserves and promotes the general intent to protect the public safety, health, and welfare. And public facilities are available or adequate to serve the proposed uses. In summary, the request is not to allow more than the conventional industrial, light industrial zoning. The zoning action required, zoning action is required for any development to take place on the property at all. And the recommended conditions are stricter and not required for the surrounding developments with the increased setback, the restricted height, restricted uses, and restricted to, of the overdoors, overhead doors and the deliveries and the restrictions on the open storage height and setbacks. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel?
I'm good.
You're good? Jesse?
I just think it's notable that they took out 24 uses. They moved the signs. They gave height concessions, which are about, what, 20% of what they're, they're actually entitled to. And on top of that, they were there before Meditera, so it's not like they're trying to, you know, buddy up to Meditera and now the situation is what it is. So with that being said, I mean, anytime somebody goes above and beyond what their entitlements are and tries to give back and then gives significant concessions, I find it very hard to not approve because really and truly we end up putting ourselves in a situation we as a city have been in a couple of times already and it hasn't worked out well. So as far as I'm concerned, they're within their entitlements. They've given a number of concessions. I, I have a very hard time telling them no at this point. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
I actually visited the site. It's, I honestly couldn't even see an issue. If anything, Meditera didn't complete its requirement because on both sides they were supposed to put a berm and they didn't put a berm on, because you can see in one of your pictures just the wall. So they were supposed to put, so there would be huge, I don't know if they're oak trees or something, but they were required and didn't. And honestly, it's so far, I think that people are just like worried about change and it's not going to be an issue. And I think that your team has been very accommodating and really terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Chris?
I'd just note that the industrial park was there before Meditera. Meditera could have taken steps to mitigate any future development of that park that would have been a concern to him. I think Laura raises a good point. I think Jesse's raised some good points. So I'll be voting for it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Mike?
No, I'm happy with it and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Fred?
I'll second this motion.
There you go. How's that? Damn, I like that approach. All right. There's been a motion and a second and we've rounded out the table. How's that? Further discussion? All right. Mike?
Good morning, everybody. Or afternoon now? Yes?
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Mike Fegan for the record, not to belabor a point, just to get it on the record. Staff is in agreeance with the proposal, probably 99%. The only issue that staff had, and it was brought up at the public hearing for the zoning board, had to do with the overhead doors on the east side facing Meditera. The original staff recommendation was to prohibit overhead doors facing Meditera. The reason for that is because we do have a condition that the applicant has agreed to regarding the requirement for several of these manufacturing uses to take place indoors. And from the staff perspective, it was kind of hard to look at that with a straight face and say, well, with three, at the time, six 14-foot-high doors that are open facing Meditera, does that really meet the intent of practicing indoors? So the original recommendation was to prohibit all. The applicant, to their credit, decided to decrease the number from six down to three. And the zoning board felt that was appropriate, so that, that is the way the ordinance was written. But just to get it on the record, the staff perspective would still be to prohibit doors on the east side, but is in agreeance with everything else. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Noted. Okay, noted. There's been a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time on this item. Welcome. Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Recognizing you now without that mask on.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Beverly Grady with Rutso and Andrist and I am representing Meditera Community Association, Inc. It's the master association for Meditera and the owner of the property directly to the east of this requested IPD zoning. Meditera Community Association was granted party inter eater status at the zoning board meeting, so we do appreciate that. As stated at the first reading in the public hearing on October 7th, on behalf of the Meditera community and its neighborhoods and the properties near the proposed industrial development, the Board of Meditera opposes the application as it currently exists. Meditera is not opposing this application in its entirety, but only the parts where the proposed industrial use and structure will be allowed to infringe upon the existing single-family residential use. Robert Pritt of Rutso had delivered a letter outlining the concerns with the zoning board meeting, which should be in your backup materials. We will file that with the clerk today. It was dated September 4th. So let me just talk a little bit, what is Meditera concerned about? One is the height. The maximum height should not exceed 30 feet or at the most 35 feet since there is an existing single-family community. And if an industrial structure exceeds 35 feet in height, the neighbors and the passersby on Meditera will be looking at an industrial structure, including, as you'll note, condition seven, the boom trucks and that type of equipment that is permitted to be on the site. Very important, as mentioned by staff, is the orientation. There should not be any doors or open windows or a loading dock on the east side of the structure facing Meditera in order to alleviate noise, dust, and born materials. This parcel faces industrial zoned and used property to its north, to its west, to its south. So those, any open doors should be facing the existing internal industrial uses that are there, but not to the east where there is residential. And noise ordinances do not provide protection for all annoying and human disrupting sounds. That high pitch of equipment backing up, the beep, 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 beep of forklifts and other, that is not regulated by your noise ordinance or the decibels. That bass sound of semi-trucks, dump trucks, those kinds of heavy motors sitting there waiting, if there's going to be shipping on the east side where they proposed a loading dock, again, not regulated by your noise ordinance. So the impacts are on the east side. So we would request that you don't allow the doors on the east side and they have three other sides where they can have their doors because, and also there's no limitation on hours, so this can be a 24-hour operation. And we are concerned about the direct impact on the single-family neighborhood. Related to that is the outdoor work. We specifically were concerned that we maintain the limitation, and counsel includes a limitation, that manufacturing uses that involve noise and dust should not be allowed outdoor. And open garage doors is the same as being outdoor. So we do concur that staff has listed certain uses to be enclosed, but again, we don't want the doors where it really doesn't operate as enclosed. As it did with the zoning board, the applicants, you know, submitted it, had first rights over Meditera because it had a proposed industrial use.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
We believe that is incorrect because the applicant stands before you with a vacant parcel and it is the obligation of the city to review and approve a design that doesn't impact the single family. Again, we're not opposing that it be rezoned. We are asking this counsel to take into account and protect the impacts that are on the east side. This applicant also was requested a deviation. That deviation allows the building to be 11 feet closer than is required by your code. There's supposed to be a 25-foot landscape buffer along the east side. The deviation reduces that to 14 feet. Again, the concern is by allowing those overhead doors, that noise, that dust will be directly impacting Meditera. We believe that the applicant is maximizing its industrial building size and use by seeking that deviation. Bonita Springs became a city in large part to eliminate substandard conditions that had blighted area under county rule and haphazard zoning laws that allowed conditions to perpetuate. So we would request the city standards to accommodate.
The board to do that. I would say that whatever motion comes out for, just agree to remove the Don Mall piece of property from, from the amendments. The other piece, which is still up for discussion, was the West Bay Club and asking for a Little Hickory commercial designation. I had recommended possibly annotating the future land use map. And what that would be is we, we put a specific policy in the comp plan that states that those uses are limited. I've been working on the language for that, talking with John, talking with the applicant. I'd like to read that into the record. If that is acceptable as a course of action, the recommendation should be to, if it is to add that property, to add it with that designation. You, of course, can just add it straight or you can deny the request. But the annotation would be uses on the property, and this is specific to West Bay Village, shall be limited to those uses legally in existence at the time of designation, which is today. And any future development must be consistent with the development standards of the underlying zoning district at the time of development. So when they come in to develop the property or down rebuild, they have to meet all of our design standards, everything for those uses today.
Okay.
So that would allow them to redevelop the site. It would, it would cover all the bases. And I don't know if I see any objection from the property owner?
I, I would just clarify that any non-residential uses on the property would be limited to those uses that exist today.
Whatever uses you have today?
Right. But if we wanted to redevelop it as residential, we would, we would be allowed to, that's a residential use that's under both of the categories, is what I'm just saying.
If you're allowed to redevelop as residential under the existing zoning district, then you'd be allowed to redevelop under the standards.
Do, are we voting on these separate?
No, you can do it as one motion.
I think I'll make a motion.
I don't think there's any objection to the second property.
Then I'll make the motion and we can get, get these both situated. So that, that motion would be including the West Bay with the annotation and excluding Don Mall?
Yes, correct.
So that's the motion.
I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion and a couple seconds. Counselors, there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Hors?
Aye.
Counselwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Burden?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We are now going to address item B, which my understanding is, is very short.
Very short.
And then, jumping ahead a little bit, if there's members of the public that need to leave at noon, you'll be able to give public comment. The applicant has agreed ahead of the presentation, so, does that sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, item B, Derek, please.
Now I lost my sheet. Oh, go on. Item B is an ordinance for the city of Bonita Springs, Florida rescinding development, the development order for the Bonita Bay development of regional impact in accordance with section 380.115 sub 2 Florida statutes providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances or resolutions providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Counsel, further discussion? Okay, members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
I only want to speak if you have any questions about the motion, but I support the motion.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
I'll recuse myself on this.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Hors?
Aye.
Counselwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Burden?
Aye.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, item C. Are there members of the public due to time constraints that would like to speak? If so, please speak at this time if you'd like.
And while they're coming up, I'll read the title of the ordinance. It's an ordinance to the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for the adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use element to amend the future land use map with the city of Bonita Springs Resource Protection, Lee County Outlying Suburban and Wetlands to Coconut Village and Resource Protection Providing for Amendment, Coconut Village Future Land Use Category Providing for Intent Providing for Severability Providing for an Effective Date. And, because this is comp plan amendment and a rezoning and we will probably want to take these together so that all the comments can count. A zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs to rezone 30.51 plus or minus acres from commercial plan development CPD, residential plan development RPD, mobile home plan development MHPD, and agricultural AG2 to residential plan development and commercial plan development to allow a boat ramp, wet and dry boat slips, a continuing care facility CCF containing a maximum of 300 independent living facilities, ILF units, and a 75-bed assisted living facility ALF or 300 unit dwelling unit, 300 multifamily dwelling units at the northwest corner of Coconut Road and Coconut Point Resort Drive and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Very good. Good job. Yeah, we're going to have some public comment due to time constraints rather than a lengthy presentation, so we're going to let them speak. Welcome.
Good morning, counsel. For the record, my name is Joanne Ribble and I'd like to speak to the marina portion of the London Bay Plan specifically against some public urging for the council to increase the size of the marina. I've been here before and I'd just like to reiterate these points that I've presented to you and to the zoning board. London Bay owns this property and since the beginning, they have pledged to provide public access to Estero Bay in perpetuity. The design has been amended in response to public input, including changes to the boat ramp and parking area to increase safety and maneuverability for boaters. The marina isn't intended to be a launch area to accommodate boaters from throughout Lee County. There are sufficient launch facilities in the area with ample parking. With future development impacting Coconut Road, including Bayview and Raptor Bay, we do not need the additional traffic congestion that a larger public marina would bring. Please do not require a second boat ramp or increased parking, which would create a perilous situation for those of us on Coconut Road who ingress and egress there. A second ramp would increase boat traffic in the immediate area, creating a potential safety issue for other boaters. And a larger marina will negatively impact our Pelican Landing Marina and our beach boat launch at the extreme end of Coconut Road. Finally, development will happen at some future time in this location. London Bay's marina plan gives Bonita an excellent opportunity to get access to Estero Bay and provide boating, kayaking, canoeing, and viewing opportunities to the locals in the area. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here. And thank you for letting me borrow your husband for dinner last night. Welcome.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Peter Tufo and I'm the president of Suffolk Construction. I would like to take this time to talk about the impact a project like Bayview would have on the local economy. What this represents for both white collar and blue collar workers in this area is unbelievable and should be moved forward. We currently at Suffolk perform over $300 million worth of work in this area, employing over 100 residents and have thousands of trade partners on our jobs every day who would like nothing more than to build this project in this area, something they could be proud of for their kids to see and really just something really good for the community. Suffolk, alongside of London Bay Homes and the local municipalities, will develop a workforce planning, planning strategy that will maximize local participation for both material suppliers as well as the tradesmen, maximize local MBE and WWE participation as well as provide mentorship programs for local small businesses. Regarding the Bayview project, we're extremely excited about not only the end product, but also the incredible impact on the local economy. From a construction standpoint, the positive impacts are significant. Construction impacts will be in excess of $300 million going back into the economy. Nearly 5,000 individuals. Nearly 5,000 individuals will work on this project throughout its duration. And that is also 1,000 worker hours performed, your man hours or woman hours, performed on that site throughout the duration. In conclusion, we believe that the Bayview development would be of great benefit and economic impact to the local area. Thank you, and have a great day.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, Rick Steinmeier. A 300 independent living facilities and 75 beds assisted living facility or 300 multifamily units. That's got me confused, what they're building there. As far as the boat ramp, I went by up on Benita Causeway. The county has a boat ramp out towards, towards Lever's Key. I guess it's called Inner's Key, I don't know what the name of it is. But there were 75 vehicles and trailers parked all over the place, a huge number of people. And it's just like parking at the beach. There'll never be enough places to park for your boat ramp during season and when the weather's nice. So first come, first served, I suppose. But I got confused on the 300 or 300. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. I'm here to speak as well about the development by London Bay. You know, this is a development that has had over 60 public meetings.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Ryan Schmidt.
Thank you.
This is a development that's had over 60 public meetings. I think the developer has done a fantastic job of trying to bring in the interest of all parties. The question of whether or not the boat ramp should be expanded further past one ramp, it takes away from the fact that this is private property that should be and can be developed by this developer to their suits per the zoning. The fact that we're being pushed into a direction where it's turning into a regional boat ramp like a Puna Ross or an Imperial River that develops considerable traffic doesn't make sense for the use. I'm an avid boater myself, and I appreciate the ability for a private entity to provide me a public ramp that they are paying for and developing. But at the same time, I don't think the intention should be to force a private developer into creating a public access facility. The fact that they're willing to put one ramp in there is generous for boaters like myself, and I would take that into consideration, I would hope.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon. My name's Taylor Masiro. I own and operate Captain Edge Charter Boats and Sweetwater out of Benita Bay Marina.
Where are you from originally?
New Hampshire, baby.
All right, just checking.
That's right.
Just had to get that.
Yeah, I knew that was coming. I was ready for that one. Couple things about Bayview. I've been involved in all the meetings, public meetings, and the feedback honestly about the boat ramp, I think, has been a little ridiculous. This is a community boat ramp. I live in Benita. I spend probably 300 days a year on the water. I see the traffic, I know the traffic. I think what London Bay is doing in providing us access is fantastic. More importantly, from a safety standpoint, I transport, I don't know how many thousands of people a year on Sunset Cruises and things like that. I don't have a safe place to go in case of an emergency. So for me, personally, I can get to that marina from New Pass, Lover's Key area for Sunset in about 10 minutes, where normally I'm going a lot further to get to emergency services. The challenge with Lover's Key is you're kind of land, well, you're kind of in the middle of nowhere as far as getting to an actual hospital where this is crucial for me just because of our demographic that we serve. So I am definitely in favor of this project and I hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Ms. Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of the committee. Alan Bowditch, I am a career marketing researcher, and I do need to make a number of points which are different from those people who have already spoken about the Bayview development. As a career market researcher, I was asked about 18 months ago to investigate the views that had been expressed by many people in Estero and in north Benita Springs.
Mr. Bowditch, could you hold on just one second? Only because Mr. Bowditch's testimony as an expert could be, you know, whether, I want to swear everyone in. Usually, we don't have to swear the public in, but when they're testifying things of their expert knowledge, I said, go ahead and do that now. Any members of the public or staff and the applicant who wish to speak on this agenda item, please raise your right hand and swear or affirm that you tell, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Sorry for the interruption.
I just want to add that gravitas to your comments. I'm sorry.
And the clock was ticking, so I'll give you an extra 30 seconds.
Okay, that's fine.
You're at three minutes now.
So the investigation that was carried out was an online survey with just under 4,000 residents. We had a 51% response to that investigation showing the unprecedented interest in this particular issue. I also carried out a number of focus groups with boaters who launched their boats, and many of those have communicated to me consistently over the last 18 months. The key points that I want to make is from 1,966 individuals in the survey, 83% said that a single boat ramp was unacceptable. There were also 438 residents from the colony who took part in that survey, and their response also on that point was that 81% of them considered the single boat ramp unacceptable too. Their views were very much in line with everyone else's. The key point was, however, that they were concerned about traffic problems along Coconut Road, as has been suggested, but they were concerned about the overall development, not specifically about boaters. The two focus groups identified that with one boat ramp, even though it is 18-foot wide, can lead to many, many difficulties. Not least, you had a problem with your car this morning, other people have problem launching their boats, and with one boat ramp locked up, it takes a great deal of time to overcome those difficulties. There are only 15 places to park the boats and the trailers onsite. There is an offsite area, but the boaters have told me that that would be very difficult because they don't want to leave their boat in the water to go and park their boat offsite because of the dangers of theft. So there are many issues of a practical nature that are of concern. So even though there are single boat ramps in southwest Florida, none of the boat ramp, none of the boaters that I've spoken to use single boat ramps for all these difficulties. And what one is really, or what the boaters have been advocating, is that by extending the 18-foot by 12 feet to 30 feet, which could be possible with an easement, which we were told from a civil engineer and boat ramp designer, that would overcome the problem. And two boat ramps would not create a massive influx of boaters to this area for the reasons that I've just mentioned, that the limited number of parking spaces, the offsite area wouldn't be used. We wouldn't see the trends that have been suggested by previous speakers. So I would like to ask Benita, the London Bay Development, to reconsider this position. We have had very amicable decisions and discussions with them, and they have responded to a number of issues that we've mentioned. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Good morning, good morning, late good morning. My name is Erv Nathanson, and I'm here representing no official organization, no club or group. I'm simply here to speak on behalf of the boating public, who have based many years of their experience and to express their views on the current single boat ramp as proposed by the London Bay Home Development. While some have construed my previous remarks in this matter to be negative, I am totally against the London Bay Homes development. This is not true. To the contrary, with one exception, they have done a fine job of researching, designing, and submitting this development for your consideration. Over the past 18 months, I've been personally engaged in the professional dialogue with Danville Ledbetter of London Bay Homes, which has been both positive and constructive in our exchange of viewpoints. 15 or 20 years ago, had London Bay Homes made such a continuing care retirement proposal of this kind, I imagine it would have fallen on deaf ears or not, would just simply have been dismissed out of hand. But the times and needs of the surrounding senior population have changed dramatically, and London Bay Homes has justified the need for their development. Applying the same analogy to my remarks based on changes in the past 15 to 20 years in the growth of the local boating population and their needs. The single boat ramp design, in my opinion, is flawed in several respects. I would like to focus my remark on only one of those flaws. Experienced boaters only desire safe, unencumbered, and timely access to the attraction jewel of the Estero Bay. Getting the boat out of the water is only the first part of that day-long experience. Getting the boat out of the water, of course, is equally important. As any boater will tell you, things do not always go as planned, and some unanticipated mechanical breakdown or human error can certainly cause a major problem with a single boat ramp. And Mayor, you'll forgive me, this is the perfect segue to your 9:20 arrival this morning. Some boats do run out of gas. Mayhem and Murphy's Law can set in rather quickly when this occurs. Such unanticipated scenarios not uncommon as one might think, and every experienced boater has had such an unfortunate experience. When it occurs, it results in backups, traffic problems, needless pollution, and not to mention the real frustration of those who are waiting to launch their boats. There's really no way to remedy such a problem when only one boat ramp is available because there is no other viable solution. The addition of an adjacent ramp would obviously provide greater unencumbered access to the Estero Bay for all to enjoy. This suggestion of a second boat ramp is particularly significant, considering that so many boaters have expressed a genuine interest in using this particular site. In arriving at any final conclusion or consideration of the London Bay Homes development, I simply request that you give further thought to the points I have raised on behalf of the boating public. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for being here. Keep your words of wisdom in mind, so thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Mayor, staff, support staff, and council members. I'm nervous as always. For the record, Jim Weeks from Weeks Fish Camp. I want to really, first off, thank you guys for your service. No matter what happens in November, I really appreciate it, and I look more, see the city of Benita moving forward.
Unless there's a lot of write-ins, I know my feet, but thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, I wrote down some notes, so don't be so nervous, so bear with me, okay? Village of Coconut, that is Weeks Fish Camp. I grew up knowing Weeks Fish Camp as Coconut. We called it Coconut. It is the forgotten village between Estero and Benita. It's at the west end of Coconut Road and always has been. Weeks Fish Camp opened 42, 1942, to the public. In '72, my granddad passed away, and waterfront property was sold because the family couldn't hold on that part of it as a group. In 2000, my grandmother passed away, and then really things started hitting, people trying to buy each people up. Investment groups came around, I remember the names, Go Who League, whatever, a bunch of them came around. I lived down there at the time, and I wanted to live there forever. Let them build around me. I couldn't care less. I loved living down there. In 2013, Green Mountain came in, and they secretly bought out individual private property owners and put them together in different groups, like I've heard mentioned, to where people don't realize that they're buying them all out for future plans. They closed the camp May 13 of 2014, promised one-year renovations, made promises to the city of what they were going to do, made promises to the public, to my family, to a bunch of people, you know? They changed course in 2015, sold the property, and then moved a different direction. I was very disappointed about that. Since then, I've been fighting for public access, fighting for support of the community that's been given to me on it, and fighting to keep the viewers' road open at the end. You remember that? That we're going to abandon the viewers' road, and I'm glad that didn't happen. I'm going to try to calm down. I wish I was just telling history. I love telling history.
This is history.
Thank you. Well, I try to separate, thank you, yeah, definitely. 2018 or so, I believe, London Bay came involved. Daughter Corn the banner I have here with Mark Wilson saying things and stuff, I disagreed with him, disagree a lot, but we disagreed with him at the very beginning. He held several public meetings. Many groups and individual people spoke on their behalf and their feelings of it, and I've heard several different angles on this. I have been aware of the pushback of this project and the resistance on the water quality, the motor launching. What scared me the most was the sharing of Coconut Road. I went down there one time, I live right there, and I, you know, the end of Coconut Road has that little turnaround at the end. I was riding my bike and saw cones up. I said, this ain't right, they can't have cones up. So I pulled up to the gentleman, had the cones up, and said, he said, can I help you, sir? I said, yes, please move the cone. This is a viewers' road, I want to turn around down there and come back. And he obliged me, and I haven't seen the cone since. So to me, that's sticking up for the rights of the public, public access, it meant a lot to me. In closing, along, London Bay planned this project, they have reconsidered in the importance of the public access and the history, and I have decided to work towards a win-win proposition for all of us. It's not the best case, not as much as we would like to have, but I think it's important that we keep it open to the public and for purity, no matter what we can get. And I think London Bay sees that importance, they want to build their project, but yet they want to be a part of the community of Benita Springs for a long time. Sorry about that.
No, you're great.
Okay, all right. So I support this project because it scares me the most that people don't want to share Coconut Road. I mean, share it. It's a public road, it's a viewers' road. You build as many communities as you want off a Coconut Road. We all live there, we need to share it. Other people say it's taken away from their, from their paradise. Well, this is our home, and I like to share our home with everybody and in the future. And I feel that London Bay has given us an opportunity to do that. Not everybody's going to be pleased, but I think the community will be pleased with what's going on down there, and I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job. Other than you saying you were nervous, I couldn't tell. Great job, honestly. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none? Derek, you want to tee this up, please?
No, I'm not doing anything. Unless I'm getting paid for it now.
Motion to approve the comp plan amendment?
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second?
So just to, just to...
Anything we need to cover, Derek? I knew there was a few things.
The teeing up is you have a comp plan amendment and you have the rezoning. You can take them both in a consolidated manner. The applicant, London Bay Homes, is here, the representatives are here. You've heard this multiple times before. I guess my request would be to at least give some basic summary, ask the applicant to go through, and staff is here to answer any questions, so.
So you'd like London Bay to make a small presentation?
At least a summary.
Yes, okay. Very well. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, oh, still morning, sorry. Good morning, for the record, Rich Ivanovich. We do have a consolidated and brief presentation. I just don't know how to, which one, is it Bayview right here? Is it it? I'll just briefly describe for you the two petitions you have in front of you. The first is, as Mr. Rooney pointed out, is the Growth Management Plan Amendment, which you've already voted to transmit. That is the opportunity to have the either-or development options of a continuing care retirement community or of 300 independent living units and 75 ALF beds or 300 multifamily units. Both options include the 72 wet slips and 10 public wet slips, two for, one for Lee County and one for Benita Fire, so there'll be 12 public slips, and 15 onsite boat trailer parking spaces are under both options. We have offsite parking as well for boat trailers, as you're aware of. That's in sum and summary, the Growth Management Plan Amendment. We can go into much greater detail if you would like on that, but I see several people shaking their head no, so I will, I will fight the urge to talk unless you have specific questions on that. And then the PD rezone implements the Growth Management Plan, and that's the second item on your agenda. Same, same development limitations are in the zoning. Mr. Rooney, do you want more from us, or is that... Mr. Rooney, do you want more from us, or is that enough?
No, I just want to make sure everyone knows what they're voting on. There's no...
I would like a presentation or some kind of summary from the staff with particular focus on page four of your report, which says, I think in your, in the staff report, you contrasted what was approved by the annexation agreement and what the difference are to what the suggestions are.
Good morning. Oh, no, good afternoon. It's twelve o'clock. Jacqueline Gensen for the record. Just to summarize on the comprehensive plan, just for technicalities, we, the council did approve to transmit the amendment. It did go up to the state agency and also other agencies. We received no technical assistance comments and no objections, so therefore there are no changes anticipated for the text or the comprehensive plan map change. And because of the substance of the request, because it includes buildings over seventy-five feet, you do need more than five affirmative votes to go ahead and adopt the change. In terms of the staff report and the comment about the annexation agreement, really what that was is there was even some comments even at the zoning board hearing about how this development is different than the annexation agreement. I'll bring Mr. Rooney into the picture, but the annexation agreement does bring in some language where it could provide alternatives for council to approve a different project. It is built into the annexation agreement, so, but one of the points that was brought up by the public and even one of the zoning board members with the companion plan development rezoning case was just an acknowledgement that the proposal before you is different than the annexation agreement, if that helps what you were looking for.
Well, I, I mean, I'm persuaded or intrigued by the comment that you have here is that adding specific permissible uses and increasing residential densities that would allow the placement of vulnerable populations in the coastal high-hazard area and coastal management area. These modifications, coupled with the companion's rezoning application, appear inconsistent with the annexation agreement. As such, and this is the important words, as such, city council should legislatively determine if these requested amendments are an appropriate use of the property. So I think that those differences, according to what you say here, that we as a council should look at things that are not entitled, that are coming from the annexation agreement. So any differences, we have to agree that this is an appropriate use of the property. And two points that I think are, should be addressed are this vulnerability to putting higher density. Now, if they use continually care, the density is marginally higher, six point four, but if they go to the alternative, it's a lot higher. It's eleven dwelling units per acre versus six. That's one of my problems that I still haven't resolved in my own mind. My second problem is that in the annexation agreement, there was a provision for one building over seventy-five feet, and this has two buildings over seventy-five feet. So those are the differences that we have to decide, that these are appropriate uses for that particular property, which is the old Weeks Fish Camp, and I think that's what I'd like to see addressed.
I guess, I'll just weigh in on this point. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. If there was no annexation agreement, most of Ms. Gensen's comments would, and the staff report would still be true. It's still a legislative determination of the council. And ultimately, that's really what they've got before you is, you know, the density. All those issues can be determined legislatively. What the annexation agreement provides is that they have some entitlement to a minimum use of the property. They have, they have looked at that and determined in their own interest that the proposal that's for you now is better than extending the prior Coconut Village entitlements over the property. And so the applicant can speak to the, or the applicant's representative can speak to the annexation agreement, but, you know, ultimately, this is, I would, I would ask you to consider this application in and of itself.
Anybody have a problem with considering this in and of itself? Okay, just so you had a question or...
Well, no, I think there's a motion.
You said, "Were we going to go around the table?"
Well, I don't, I've already made a motion. I'm good to vote if, but if we decide we're going to go around the table again, then I've got comments. If we're going to vote, I'm good to go.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Is there further comments? Okay, now should we let the public speak?
Yes, and I would let the applicant, if they have anything to rebut from staff's presentation or my own comments.
Didn't let the people speak before.
Yeah, they did. So please, I'm...
Just real briefly, with regard to consistency with the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, with the annexation agreement, at the prior hearing, your own staff said that our building with the two towers was in fact one building under the building code. So we are consistent with the annexation agreement. We had that testimony at your prior hearing, and there was a lot of testimony regarding, and I'm sure Ms. Gensen can get into the details, we are required to have an emergency, basically, an emergency management plan in place for any project that's greater than a hundred units. So there will be a review and approval of an emergency management plan related to hurricane and evacuation. I just wanted to add that to the record. So all of those items were, in fact, brought up and addressed at our transmittal hearing, and what you have in front of you is consistent with what was previously recommended be transmitted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, there's been a motion and a second. Any further questions, counsel, or any further comments, anybody? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gramba.
No.
Councilwoman Perdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Okay, and now a separate vote on the zoning.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
And there's a second? Okay, counsel, discussion or questions? Okay. Any presentation material?
Unless you have specific questions, again, the rezon is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Everybody good on questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gramba.
No.
Councilwoman Perdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. That's called teamwork, making the dream work. Great job.
And Benita's charming little Benita got a little bit glassier.
Three hundred million dollars back to the local economy. That's right.
All right, and if you recall, item eight C has been continued to November fourth. So you are at your consent agenda, unless you wish to take a break.
All right. Do we need a break, team, or are we all right to keep going?
Oh, I'm so, no, wait.
Real quick, Derek, I'm sorry, real quickly, as folks are entering and leaving, we did, I would just remind everybody that if we are in, we are in the home of the fire department and we're borrowing this space, so that if you are out in the lobby, please have a mask on at all times. Thank you. I'm sorry, Derek, go ahead.
No, I skipped over one. You still have item eight B, which is the Harkat Industrial Plan Development rezoning.
Okay.
Okay, and this is a zoning ordinance of the City of Benita Springs to rezon one point eight-two plus or minus acres from Industrial Plan Development IPD to Industrial Plan Development IPD for two parcels located at ten nine seventy-one and ten nine seventy-nine Enterprise Avenue, Benita Springs, Florida, three four one three five, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
And at this time, I'll go ahead and just swear in everybody, because I see there's a number of consultants here.
Great.
Anyone who intends to give any testimony, public or for the applicant, please raise your right hand and swear affirm that you tell, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Thank you. I also believe, Mr. Mayor, there are two representatives of the adjacent neighborhoods who have requested objector status. If they request additional time at the public comment to either cross-examine or to present evidence, I would ask them each to make their request at the opening statements. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Derek. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Farrar with BCF Management Group. I'm the agent for Harkat LLC. I just wanted to share what the owner had asked me to do. He is a resident and business owner here in the City of Benita Springs for over forty years, and he appreciates the staff and zoning board's recommendation of approval for this project. As it's become tougher and tougher economically out there, I believe that this, this person who goes through and puts their time, talent, and treasure at risk to take on this new adventure should be applauded for this project and give fair consideration for its difficult economic times. This project will provide direct job opportunities in the city which are needed, and I look forward to that. With this in mind, I'd like to introduce my planner, Stacy Hewitt from Banks Engineering, and the other consultants on the team for the presentation. Stacy?
Good morning, or good afternoon. Stacy Hewitt with Banks Engineering. I am a planner and would like, I've previously been accepted as an expert in land use and planning, and I would request to be accepted as such today.
Without objection. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll start with the K.
Yes. I appreciate your patience with us. We do have some members of the public, so we would like to make a presentation from the project.
Absolutely.
The request is for one point eight-two acres on the south side of the eastern terminus of Enterprise Avenue. The existing zoning is the American Ready Mix Industrial Plan Development, which was approved by Lee County and is expired. It was for a concrete batch plant. The original zoning for the property was light industrial. We do have the applicant's team here. We have counsel Jeff Wright with Henderson Franklin. We have the landscape architect Paul Klens, the engineer Brent Addison, and the transportation engineer Ted Trish, who will be available for any questions. This is the project location. It's south and east of Benita Beach and Racetrack Road on the south side of Enterprise Avenue. The future land use for the site is industrial, and to the east, across from a right-of-way, is the moderate-density mixed-use plan development, future land use designation. The zoning for the site is the expired industrial plan development, and the surrounding zoning is light industrial with the Mediterra RPD across the right-of-way to the east. This is an aerial of the site. To the north, there's existing industrial warehousing and distribution for auto repair with exterior overhead doors and a loading dock facing Mediterra. To the east is right-of-way and then the Mediterra community. To the south is an industrial warehouse and distribution center with several sites to the south as well having overhead doors facing the community to the east. To the west is an existing industrial and auto repair use. The zoning board did recommend approval for the case. They heard and deliberated over the testimony of all interested parties, and the industrial subdivision existed prior to Mediterra zoning approval, which included extensive buffer and landscaping with a wall on top of a ten-foot berm, as we'll show further in the presentation. And there is an existing code provision for 2014 F, which does protect industrial subdivisions that are in existence prior to residential zoning from increased setbacks. The staff report recommends approval, and the applicant's in agreement with the conditions of approval is amended by the pre-hearing stipulation and the zoning board recommendation, and I would like to adopt the staff report and attachments as part of my testimony today. A couple of things I would like to note on the aerial in front of you. The subject, the north is to your right on this image. The subject property is in this location, and to, this is the existing landscaping and buffering between the site and Mediterra and some existing residences in Mediterra. There are, to the north, there's existing overhead doors facing the site. There's commercial zoning a little bit further north that also has overhead doors facing Mediterra, and several of the industrial uses to the south have those as well. And there is extensive landscaping and ten-foot berm with eight-foot wall that do provide visual, sound, and light buffering from the proposed development. A timeline for the property is in ninety-one. It was rezoned from IL to industrial plan development to allow the concrete batch plant, and the main cement storage facility as part of that zoning allowed for a maximum sixty-five foot in height, and all other structures thirty-five feet. In June of ninety-one, it did receive South Florida Water Management District and a development order approval. Mediterra RPD was then approved in December of twenty ninety, or nineteen ninety-nine, and the current application is the City of Benita Springs position that the master concept plans expired, so no development can happen on the site until the zoning is reestablished for the property. The applicant at first did propose light industrial zoning, but in working with staff, they suggested an industrial plan development due to the residential property to the east. And the current request as conditioned is less intense than the light industrial zoning since the uses have been removed or restricted and setbacks have been increased and there are further site limitations with the conditions. There were three neighborhood meetings held as part of the process, and in response to feedback from the neighbors, we did reduce the building height twenty percent from originally requested fifty feet down to forty feet. We've removed and restricted some of the uses. There's increased setbacks provided and increased proposed buffer from the original request, and we've restricted service and deliveries to the west side of the building and further restricted from the original six garage doors on the east. We've reduced those down to three, and we've also agreed to an open storage height and setback limitations. This is the proposed master concept plan that demonstrates the buffering to the north and to the east, as well as the site circulation and the proposed stormwater vault, and the water quality will exceed the requirements. Excuse me. This is a line of sight of the property that demonstrates the distance between the proposed development and the existing residences over at Mediterra. Between property lines, there's a hundred seventy-two feet from our property line and the nearest residential lot, and there is approximately two hundred and sixty-six feet between the proposed building and the nearest residential house. There is extensive buffering that exists on Mediterra's property, as well as our proposed a wall setback fourteen feet from the property line with a five trees per hundred linear feet and a double-staggered hedgerow, where the, we, I'll get into the deviation further, but there, typically, if there's parking within a hundred and twenty-five feet of a residence, the wall would be setback twenty-five feet, and we're requesting that it be setback fourteen feet, but we're increasing the shrubs from eighteen per hundred linear feet to a double-staggered hedgerow as well. This is the schedule of uses. In red are indicating the uses that we've either taken out of the request since the original application or that we've further limited with staff to require them indoors. We've removed twenty-four uses from the request, and we've further restricted fourteen uses. This is the property development regulations, also showing some changes from the original application. We've increased the side setbacks from twenty feet to twenty-five feet and the rear setback from fifteen feet to twenty-five feet. The maximum building height originally requested was fifty. We've reduced that to forty. And a couple of notes, the Land Development Code, section four, eighteen seventy-three, would allow increased height by increasing your setbacks, one half-foot for every one foot of increased height. And in the adjacent light industrial zoning, that would allow a height of forty-five feet if they provided the same setback of twenty-five feet that were required. Just to put that in reference with, we are restricting ourselves more than what would be allowed in the adjacent zonings. These are the conditions that are handled in the staff report that I believe everybody has seen in the draft ordinance with, we are restricting the deliveries to the west side of the building. We're restricting to three overhead doors on the east rather than the six that were originally proposed, and the open storage is required to have increased limited height setback and more restrictive than the adjacent. The original deviations one and two were withdrawn from the request, but the current requested deviation three is the one described of just allowing the wall to be setback fourteen feet from the property line instead of... 14 feet from the property line instead of 25 feet for the code. And the the site is abutting a 32-foot right-of-way that also separates us from the Meditera property, and there is the 172-foot separation between the property lines. And Meditera, as be shown in the future slides, is separated and mutually protected by their own development plan, which was reviewed and approved while this existing industrial subdivision was in place. The existing buffering is 25-foot perimeter buffer with a 10-foot berm and 8-foot wall, lush landscaping, and rights-of-way and common elements are also located between their buffer and the dwelling units. This is the Meditera master concept plan that was approved that demonstrates the 25-foot perimeter buffer and the existing industrial subdivision that was there when it was approved. This slide demonstrates their lush landscaping and the required berm and wall that are also were included in their zoning approval. This is our proposed landscape plan demonstrating the buffering that was originally discussed on the master concept plan. This slide is again the line of sight, but I would just like to demonstrate, this is standing in front of the subject properties on your right, and this is facing, this is the existing berm, wall, and existing landscaping at Meditera. These are the proposed elevations. We are proposing to limit the doors to three instead of the six shown on these elevations. There are two alternates proposed, and sand user has not been decided at this time, and there is either a peak roof proposed or a slanted roof from one side to the other. This is the floor plan. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Policy 1.1.16 is agreed in the staff report and the zoning board recommendation for approval. The height of 40 feet, it, again, IL zoning can increase their height above that with the proposed setback that we have. It's less than the 75 feet allowed in the industrial land use designation, and it's also less than the 65 feet that was previously approved on the site. The floor area ratio is 0.37 opposed to a maximum of 1.2, which is allowed in this policy of the comprehensive plan. The request is also consistent with Objective 1.11 and Policy 1.11.1. It's also consistent with the transportation element and the recreation and open space Staff and applicant and the zoning board have all agreed that the project does meet all required formal findings for the criteria for approval. The applicant's proven entitlement to the rezoning by demonstrating compliance with the comp plan, the Land Development Code with the approval of the deviation. It will meet and exceed all performance and locational standards for the request and is also consistent with the densities, intensities, and general uses set forth in the plan. As demonstrated, it is compatible with existing or planned uses in the surrounding area, and it will, approval of the request will not place an undue burden upon transportation or planned infrastructure facilities, and it will not adversely affect environmental or critical areas. The proposed use, uses are appropriate at the subject location as more restrictive than the surrounding industrial zoning, and the recommended conditions are, provide sufficient safeguards to the public interest. The recommended conditions are reasonably related, and the deviation enhances the achievement of the objective of the planned development and preserves and promotes the general intent to protect the public safety, health, and welfare. And public facilities are available or adequate to serve the proposed uses. In summary, the request is not to allow more than the conventional industrial, light industrial zoning. The zoning action required, zoning action is required for any development to take place on the property at all, and the recommended conditions are stricter and not required for the surrounding developments with the increased setback, the restricted height, restricted uses, and restricted to, of the overdoors, overhead doors and the deliveries, and the restricted restrictions on the open storage height and setbacks. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel?
I'm good.
You're good? Jesse?
I just think it's notable that they took out 24 uses. They moved the signs. They gave height concessions, which are about, what, 20% of what they're all, they're actually entitled to. And on top of that, they were there before Meditera, so it's not like they're trying to, you know, buddy up to Meditera now. The situation is what it is. So with that being said, I mean, anytime somebody goes above and beyond what their entitlements are and tries to give back and then gives significant concessions, I find it very hard to not approve because really and truly, we end up putting ourselves in a situation we as a city have been in a couple of times already, and it hasn't worked out well. So as far as I'm concerned, they're within their entitlements. They've given a number of concessions. I have a very hard time telling them no at this point. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Laura?
I actually visited the site. It's, I honestly couldn't even see an issue. If anything, Meditera didn't complete its requirement because on both sides they were supposed to put a berm, and they didn't put a berm on, because you can see in one of your pictures just the wall. So they were supposed to put, so there would be huge, I don't know if they're oak trees or something, but they were required and didn't. And honestly, it's so far, I think that people are just like worried about change, and it's not going to be an issue, and I think that your team has been very accommodating and really terrific.
Thank you, Lauren. Chris?
I'd just note that the industrial park was there before Meditera. Meditera could have taken steps to mitigate any future development of that park that would have been a concern to them. I think Laura raises a good point. I think Jesse's raised some good points, so I'll be voting for it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Mike?
No, I'm happy with it, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Fred?
How second is motion?
There you go. How's that? Man, I like that approach. There's been a motion and a second, and we've rounded out the table. How's that? Further discussion? All right. Mike?
Good morning, everybody. Or afternoon now? Yes?
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Mike Fegan for the record. Not to belabor a point, just to get it on the record. Staff is in agreeance with the proposal, probably 99%. The only issue that staff had, and it was brought up at the public hearing for the zoning board, had to do with the overhead doors on the east side facing Meditera. The original staff recommendation was to prohibit overhead doors facing Meditera. The reason for that is because we do have a condition that the applicant has agreed to regarding the requirement for several of these manufacturing uses to take place indoors. And from the staff perspective, it was kind of hard to look at that with a straight face and say, well, with three, at the time, six 14-foot-high doors that are open facing Meditera, does that really meet the intent of practicing indoors? So the original recommendation was to prohibit all. The applicant, to their credit, decided to decrease the number from six down to three, and the zoning board felt that was appropriate, so that that is the way the ordinance was written. But just to get it on the record, the staff perspective would still be to prohibit doors on the east side, but is in agreeance with everything else. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Noted. Okay, noted. There's been a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time on this item. Welcome. Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Recognize you now without that mask on.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Beverly Grady with Rutzel and Andrist, and I am representing Meditera Community Association, Inc. It's the master association for Meditera and the owner of the property directly to the east of this requested IPD zoning. Meditera Community Association was granted party intereater status at the zoning board meeting, so we do appreciate that. As stated at the first reading in the public hearing on October 7th, on behalf of the Meditera community and its neighborhoods and the properties near the proposed industrial development, the Board of Meditera opposes the application as it currently exists. Meditera is not opposing this application in its entirety, but only the parts where the proposed industrial use and structure will be allowed to infringe upon the existing single-family residential use. Robert Pritt of Rutzel had delivered a letter outlining the concerns at the zoning board meeting, which should be in your backup materials. We will file that with the clerk today. It was dated September 4th. So let me just talk a little bit. What is Matera concerned about? One is the height. The maximum height should not exceed 30 feet or at the most 35 feet since there is an existing single-family community, and if an industrial structure exceeds 35 feet in height, the neighbors and the pastors by Meditera will be looking at an industrial structure, including, as you'll note, Condition 7, the boom trucks and that type of equipment that is permitted to be on the site. Very important, as mentioned by staff, is the orientation. There should not be any doors or open windows or a loading dock on the east side of the structure facing Meditera in order to alleviate noise, dust, and born materials. This parcel faces industrial zoned and used property to its north, to its west, to its south. So those, any open doors should be facing the existing internal industrial uses that are there, but not to the east where there is residential. And noise ordinances do not provide protection for all annoying and human-disrupting sounds. That high pitch of equipment backing up, the beep, 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 beep of forklifts and other, that is not regulated by your noise ordinance or the decibels. That bass sound of semi-trucks, dump trucks, those kinds of heavy motors sitting there waiting, if there's going to be shipping on the east side where they proposed a loading dock, again, not regulated by your noise ordinance. So the impacts are on the east side, so we would request that you don't allow the doors on the east side, and you, they have three other sides where they can have their doors because, and also, there's no limitation on hours, so this can be a 24-hour operation, and we are concerned about the direct impact on the single-family neighborhood. Related to that is the outdoor work. We specifically were concerned that we maintain the limitation, and counsel includes a limitation that manufacturing uses that involve noise and dust should not be allowed outdoor, and open garage doors is the same as being outdoor. So we do concur that staff has listed certain uses to be enclosed, but again, we don't want the doors where it really doesn't operate as enclosed. As I did with the zoning board, the applicants, you know, submitted it, had first rights over Meditera because it had a proposed industrial use. We believe that-
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
We believe that is incorrect because the applicant stands before you with a vacant parcel, and it is the obligation of the city to review and approve a design that doesn't impact the single family. Again, we're not opposing that it be rezoned. We are asking this counsel to take into account and protect the impacts that are on the east side. This applicant also has requested a deviation. That deviation allows the building to be 11 feet closer than is required by your code. There's supposed to be a 25-foot landscape buffer along the east side. The deviation reduces that to 14 feet. Again, the concern is by allowing those overhead doors, that noise, that dust will be directly impacting Matera. We believe that the applicant is maximizing its industrial building size and use by seeking that deviation. Bonita Springs became a city in large part to eliminate substandard conditions that had blighted area under county rule and haphazard zoning laws that allowed conditions to perpetuate. So we would request the city standards to accommodate uses with limitations that would mitigate adverse impacts and yet would still permit approval of this industrial request. We would request that you reject the request as proposed, but adopt conditions that would protect, for example, under Section 2 of the ordinance, Condition 2A, keep the completely enclosed language. On page four of six of your ordinance, Section 2B, limit the height to 30 or 35 feet, and most important, under Condition 3B, keep the original staff recommendation of no overdoor, overhead garage doors on the east side, and under Condition 7, open storage-
Excuse me, ma'am? It says no more than three overhead garage doors may be located on the east side of the building.
Correct. That is what it says. Our request is that you go back to the original staff recommendation of no overhead doors on the east side. That still permits this applicant to have doors on its north, its west, and its south. It permits the applicant to have the industrial use, but it would protect Meditera, and we would request that you go back to the original staff recommendation. And with that, we thank you and hope that you will take into account these protections for Meditera. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel, questions or?
Can I just hear the reply from, I think, instead of Rick? Rick could do it after, maybe?
There's gonna, there's gonna be another objector as well. You may want to allow, the applicant may want, wish to do the rebuttal all at once.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Rick Steinbach again. Beep, beep, beep. That is annoying. Noise is annoying. But there is a noise ordinance in the city, I think, I hope it would apply to the people who live in Meditera if there is a noise problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name's Tim Richards. I'm the general manager of the Meditera Community Association. I wasn't around during the beach club, so I, it was interesting earlier when the beach club kept coming up, but, and neither was I around when Meditera was built, the buffer that you had mentioned earlier back, I guess, 2000, 2001. As we all know, a lot's changed over the years, and, you know, if the topography's changed over time, those things can be fixed. What can't be fixed is the height of a building once it's constructed. And as you can imagine, the residents of Meditera, particularly the ones that live adjacent to that, built that area, along with all the other neighborhoods in the back section of Meditera, they're very concerned about the impact that a 40-foot-high structure is going to have on the community. They're concerned about what it means for them, quality of life, what they're going to be looking at, the obvious things that were mentioned already, noise, smells, things of that nature. And of course, their home values at resale. So I'm the one that receives all those calls, like many of you at the city as well, and so the residents are concerned. Well, they, you know, they understand growth and development is going to happen. What we'd like to see is keep the height down to 30 feet. Obviously, limit the uses to indoor use to the extent that you can. And once again, what was already stated was remove the doors on the east side, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Justice?
No, thank you.
I have a question. The Meditera homes that are on the other side of the wall, how high are they?
I don't know the actual height of them. I would say 20, 25 feet, maybe 30. I don't know.
Really?
I, yeah, I wouldn't know.
So how high would they be? Meditera homes are not normal single-family homes.
Counsel, my car staff can probably give you the maximum-
I'm just curious, because when I was there, I couldn't see a home. So I couldn't see a home, and when I went up on the hill, actually, it is a really big, sort of big hill. I had hills on. And when I went up and I looked down, the height, there's another building in there that's higher, and you couldn't even see it. So I don't know if there's really-
I can find out what the height of a home is, if you'd like.
But, but I mean, are they really going to see it? You can't see anything from the boom. It's not that-
40 feet is a, is a tall building. The buildings that are next to it, I don't believe that they're 40 feet-
There's a taller building.
-up or bordering the residents of Meditera.
Yeah.
Taller, okay.
Well, it's right there, yeah.
I don't think that's 40 feet, that building, but I could, we can verify that.
Do we have a, do we have a line of sight photograph?
Yeah.
From either side, whether it was taken from Meditera's side or whether it was taking, taken from the other side of the berm? If we could go back to that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Also, could you remind us what was, I'm sorry, could you also remind us what is the actual entitlement? So say you guys said, forget this, sell it, somebody else were to buy it. Where it's currently zoned, what's the maximum height that they could put there?
As previously stated, the existing zoning on the site is expired, so zoning is required to do any entitlements on the property right now, but the prior zoning allowed the batch plant to be up to 65 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's 40 right now as you have it, correct?
Yes, we originally requested 50 feet, and we've reduced it down to 40. Yes, we originally requested 50 feet, and we've reduced it down to 40.
I've got a question.
Thank you.
You made in your presentation the statement that other buildings out there have doors that face Meditera?
That is correct.
Are they actually adjoining Mediterranean, where they're actually, so then that's, okay.
To the north of this site and to the south of this site. The above image demonstrates overhead doors on the site directly across the street to the north has overhead doors. And this is actually the loading dock that I was referring to, not on the subject site. On the subject site, service and deliveries are restricted by condition to just the west side. When I mentioned the loading dock and exterior doors facing Meditera, I was talking about this industrial site that's existing to the north, as well as the commercial site further north than that also has six overhead doors facing Meditera. And then to the south, there's also existing industrial zoning, and several of them have six overhead doors that are facing Meditera as well.
Motion to approve.
As I was going to say, is there other members of the public? Yeah, oh yes, please. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
My name is Alan Tony Pierce, law firm at Woodward. Pierce Lombardo from Naples, Florida. I represent Joanna Irons and Kevin Simmons, who live on Amron Court within the notice required area. They're directly across from this property.
Simmons, you said?
No, excuse me. And they live on Amron Court within the 275-foot. In fact, their front door is about 170 feet from the property. And also, Joseph Lantini, who lives on Amron Court, that's in my correspondence, as I mentioned here, 2911 Amron Court and 29011 Amron Court. We have, we agree with the issues raised by the Meditera Association, and we agree with the fact that the development as proposed, especially with the not prohibiting overhead doors on the east side, would be detrimental to the property values and the quality of life in Meditera. As you know, that's a high-end community, multi-million-dollar homes. And I know that Mr. Fowler mentioned that this industrial property, if developed, will have an economic, positive economic impact to the community. I agree with that, provide jobs. But it also have the potential for significant adverse economic impact to this community if the property values in Meditera are adversely affected. Noise, dust, odor, and as Ms. Grady mentioned, from the vehicles that could operate on the east side. Code enforcement is not the answer. The way to approach this, I would submit, is to address it upfront to eliminate the possibility of those kind of issues occurring on the east side or minimizing them by not allowing the overhead doors. Height is an issue. We recognize there's been this discussion with regards to buffering to help mitigate it. And when you have issues of industrial use against the residential use, as has been indicated and testified to, there currently is no zoning on this property. So there's really no entitlement. They're asking, and we believe that to have a compatible project, the most important feature at this point in time is eliminating the overhead doors. There are regulations in there with regards to certain activities have to occur indoors. We appreciate that. But again, that would become difficult and also a constant code enforcement nightmare if there are overhead doors on the east side. So we would suggest, we request a reduction in height, but most of all, we, staff recommendation is consistent at the present time, no overhead doors on the east side. We think that's the biggest issue that's probably remaining at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is Joseph Lantini, and I live on Amron Court. I'm a contractor. So I understand the needs of the developer. I understand that. We're not opposed to them having the development. But when you look at what they're proposing, all we're really requesting is that you take the doors from the east side moving to the west side, or one of the other sides. I think that would do a tremendous benefit to the homes on our street. We're in Benita Springs. When this was brought up in front of the zoning board, a few of the members didn't even know that. They saw Naples addresses. And they seem to be a little callous about our needs. We are in Benita Springs. We pay tremendous taxes in Benita Springs, and we will continue to. And hopefully, within a few years, I'll be a permanent resident. I'm getting a little tired of the snow in Michigan. So we really, all we can do is ask you to consider the fact of what we're really asking for, not trying to damage them. They're entitled to develop the property, but it would really be beneficial to us homeowners on Amron Court if the doors were not on the east side. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, may I make one correction for the record?
Yes.
It's Kevin Simpson. I'm sorry.
Oh, Simpson. Okay.
I'm just spoke. I apologize.
Simmons, Simon Simpson.
I apologize.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I get a question of the applicant?
Yes, yes.
I'm pretty much, I'm almost ready to vote, but I just, humor me on this part. What is the sticking point on your side regarding these three doors? Like, I mean, this, literally, it seems like the last sticking point is these three doors. So I understand their side. I've heard it. What is your sticking point on the three doors? Why does it matter to the point where this program does, or it does or it doesn't pass over three doors? What's going on with that?
The primary reason for having the doors on both the east and west sides of the building is to take advantage of the primarily east-west winds to provide ventilation for the industrial area. In the warehouse, the office of the building will have air conditioning, but the rest of the industrial area will not. And it's to provide for ventilation and for air circulation for the workers, for things of that nature.
Okay.
And there is, I'd just like to reiterate, the extensive buffer and distance. There's two walls that are between the properties, as well as existing and proposed landscaping that are going to be separating both sites. And this right is allowed and enjoyed by the properties to the north and to the south, and we have agreed to restrict and settle of the uses. I would like to also clarify one other thing that was mentioned on the record. We are adhering to the 25-foot building setback. The deviation is for the buffer wall to be 14 foot from the property line, not the building wall. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified as well.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
Also, didn't you state that you were going to restrict receiving on the east side?
Yes. All the service and delivery is only happening on the west side. That's an existing condition that's in there as well. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, well, that makes a difference.
And I heard the expression, swell by it. Could you humor me for a second? That photo there, was that taken at the same time as the other one? If you could flip back a few, the line of sight, I see that line of sight. I want to, if you're down on the ground, line of sight?
Okay, yes. This was actually taken from the Lee County Property Appraisers website and was the current aerial.
Okay.
And the line-
So that's current?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And this is the-
You know what? Let's stick to that one for a second. Is that right where it is as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then the one that was a picture in front of the site facing Meditera is right here.
Okay. Now, when I'm looking, and I see two spots of white, is that through to like the sky, or is that a house?
That's to the sky.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just was having a hard time making it out. So the line of sight, you see trees?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had. I just wanted to know.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Or are there other members of the public that would like to speak?
Call a question.
Okay. Question's been called. Public's said what they want to say. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Counselor McForrest?
Aye.
Counselor McCarumba?
Aye.
Counselor M. Pardon?
Aye.
Counselor W. McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Counselor McCorey?
Aye.
Counselor M. Gibson?
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you. Derek, what's next?
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
You are on to your consent agenda.
Okay.
Also, Mayor, we do have some sandwiches and some waters for council, but the fire department asked if we just not eat in here, but we do have things set up in the hallway in there for you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on, counsel, to the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve and a second on the consent agenda, but we are absent one voting member, right? Or can we vote on consent agendas?
No.
Okay, just checking, right, Mike? Details matter.
Where'd she go?
So actually, on A, did Hill come back? Because I thought Hill got dropped from CH2M.
Actually, CH2M got dropped, but it was purchased by Jacobs. CH2M Hill exists as a contractual entity only.
Say that again, John?
CH2M Hill was then informally dropped to CH2M, but contractually for agreements, they kept the CH2M Hill engineers, which is why it says CH2M Hill engineers, despite the fact that CH2M Hill engineers was purchased and is a wholly-owned subsidiary or contractual entity of Jacobs Engineering Group.
There you go. Wow.
So is this a loophole? We don't have to pay you guys because, you know?
I thought it was double.
Okay.
Would the funding for this come out of the general fund, or could you use the building fund for any of this?
We do use the building fund. The building department that enforces the Florida Building Code is entirely paid for out of the building permit fees, and some of the planning and zoning staff that are intertwined into the Florida Building Code also are funded.
So part of this, we have two funds, general fund and-
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. This directly reflects the budget that you recently passed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second for the consent agenda. Counsel, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor W. McCarumba?
Aye.
Counselor M. Pardon?
Aye.
Counselor W. McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Counselor McCorey?
Aye.
Counselor M. Gibson?
Aye.
Counselor McForrest?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Chris, we're going to move on now to proclamations and presentations. Chris Campbell, if you could come forward, please.
You're going to take your mask down, at least for the picture, right?
You may sit in here today.
It's now 60.
I can recognize you, though. Look at that. Welcome. On behalf of the City of Benita Springs, 15 years of service presented to Chris Campbell. As of the 17th day of September 2020, in appreciation and recognition, 15 years of public service to the City of Benita Springs, Florida, signed Mayor Peter Simmons and City Manager Arlene Hunt.
Have you been zoning the whole time?
Code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement, the whole time. I meant code enforcement. Wow. I just have to comment on your service in that particular area. It's very much appreciated, and I think it's under-recognized how hard a job you do, and you do it well. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Congratulations. Vital part of the team. Okay, Item B is a presentation of Imperial Crossing Development Proposal, and this is green sheet 20-10-316.
Can we do a little quick recess before? This is going to take a while, I'd assume.
Quick recess? Sure.
I'd love to. Well, I mean, you guys can start. I just want, I'm going to run off. I'll be a minute.
But, no, and you do have, you do have some food, food in the lobby if you wanted to-
It's 12:53. Is seven minutes good?
To eat?
Okay, it's 12:53. Why don't we reconvene at 1 o'clock? Thanks.
So they don't want us eating in here, Arlene?
No, no.
Can we go in their kitchen?
Yeah.